Yep. All right, good evening. I apologize for the delay. Technology is wonderful sometimes and sometimes it's not. I'm gonna call to order the regular board meeting, Anchor Bay School District, September 23rd, 2020. If we could get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. Hi, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for what lives stands one nation under God and indivisible, one unity, and justice for all. All right, I see that Mr. Middlestadt's just getting settled in, so I'm gonna ask Ms. Perkmeier to go ahead and take roll call.
I'm Mr. Witt.
Do we have sound on there, Tim?
Yeah, she can unmute herself.
I saw her on the Zoom minute ago.
Here.
Oh, there she is.
Ms. Handershaw?
Here.
Mr. Drew?
Here.
Mr. Moses?
Uh, here.
Mr. Middlestadt?
Here.
Um, Mr. Green?
Here.
And Perkmeier here.
Great, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna, something wrong, Tim?
Close, sir.
Is that better, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna start the meeting on kind of a somber note. Many of you have been made aware that we had a former student, an Anchor Bay graduate from 2012 that was, uh, was killed in a horrific accident on I-94 on Monday. That student is a 26-year-old, Zach Hornseth. Zach's mom is a teacher in the district, and it certainly has had its ripple effect throughout the district by taking calls from teachers that are upset, former students that are upset, administrators that are upset. So, as such, I'm requesting that if you're so, see so fit that you would join me in a moment of silence on Zach's behalf and keep all of his friends, family, and coworkers in his thoughts. So, a moment of silence if you would. That's great, thank you. It's much appreciated and I'm sure the family appreciates it as well. We'll get started with the agenda, and at this time, we're gonna be starting item number two on our agenda that towards greater student achievement and looking at options to return to in-person learning. With that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Woodside to get us started, and I'm sure he'll pull his team in as he needs to.
Yeah, what I wanted to do is I was gonna start out today, I do have the presentations for Joe and Terry, but I wanted to run through some of this with the, you know, I wanted to run through, through some of this, kinda consolidate, because we know we've met about three times in regards to this subject. So, as we move forward... Is that the... Can we go to the next slide, Tim, and see if that's the... Nope, that's not the... I think you're doing the next presentation. I have one before that. So, what I wanted to do is basically, we were gonna talk about the safety measures. I know we continue to get questions on that, rightfully so. So, I wanted to share again some of the things that we're doing at our elementary, at our secondary, on the school buses, so that'll help with any of the decisions as we go forward. I wanted to, you know, talk about face-to-face and the virtual and what those options, you know, are going to be, you know, going forward, and also, you know, how to start when you do decide to go face-to-face, how to start that. So, this really boiled down to three questions, and that's what I was trying to do at, on this presentation. And Joe and Terry have one much more detailed, and I think this one really just brings us right to, you know, what are the decisions that we need to make going forward? All right, you can go to the next slide, Jim. All right, quickly, I won't read all of these, but what we talked before, the elementary safety measures, the things that we're gonna do, we're gonna make sure that you have masks for, you know, all of the students, the hand sanitizer throughout the building, hand sanitizer as you, you know, enter the building, the bathrooms, you know, obviously will be clean throughout the day, and we'll also have, you know, bathrooms and the classrooms, you know, also have the opportunity to use those too. Every four hours in the elementary, we're gonna be sanitizing the student desks, and you can see like custodians are gonna be brought in earlier and to help with the cleaning during the day, so you're second shift. And right now, we do not have any of our facilities being used at the, in the evening. So, not only your aquatic center's not being used in the evening, it's like none of the buildings are, and obviously the reason for that is during COVID, we wanna make sure, you know, that our students and staff are as safe as possible. We also have these electrostatic sprayers that we're gonna use each night to disinfect the buildings and the gyms and, you know, all the common areas along with the cleaning measures that we're going to take every day. You can go to the secondary. And secondary, pretty, you know, pretty similar, we are, you know, we're gonna make sure that all the students are, you know, have masks. We're gonna make sure we have the hand sanitizer stations, the bathrooms, you know, and we're gonna be using all staff to help keep the building sanitized, and that's your custodians, your paraprofessional staff, you know, we've met with them in helping us to keep the building sanitized for staff, you know, and students. We have the same thing as the electrostatic sprayers that will be doing all the gyms and the common areas and things like that. One of the areas I know, and Mr. Raffbug's been working on it, you know, the one question that keeps coming up that I've gotten from, you know, parents and staff is how are we cleaning the desks? And we're working on that, we're moving in the right direction. If you were to ask me, you know, what are, you know, Lance Cruz, Richmond, Romeo, Chippewa, what is New Haven, Lakeview, some of those are face-to-face, and they've got, you know, they do have the teachers, you know, spraying the desk and the students help wipe off the desk, and we're moving in that same direction, and Todd's been working with that with the ABEA. So, that's what we're doing in the secondary. I wanna remind again, you know, the safety measures district-wide that we're having, the paraprofessionals, the head custodians, you know, we're gonna be monitoring throughout the day, our HVA system, you know, as far as upgrading, changing those filters, the classroom unit ventilators, rooftop units are programmed to bring in, you know, fresh air. So, we're, you know, we're doing, you know, all the measures we possibly can. So, whether we, how we decide going forward, that we're taking the measures within our control and making sure that we're making every, you know, we're doing every effort to make it as safe as possible. I know one of the things that we probably gotta, you know, one of the questions are, we talked about before as far as face-to-face for the elementary students, we should, as a board, have a K-12 face mask for all students, because in the face-to-face, depending on what you choose, there's gonna be a, you know, challenge with the social distancing, and this is, this is the same challenges that all your districts that are having that are face-to-face with all students, you know, returns. So, that's some of the challenges, and we talked about that back on, you know, August 11th, some of the challenge that, challenges that we would have, you know, going forward. But all of, you know, all of the requirements that the governor has required in our roadmap and return to school, we are going to need all those. District-wide safety measures, you know, this is, this is more updated from the last board meeting. The safety shields have been installed in all the offices, so if you do come in, you know, you're going to see all of the safety shields and sanitizer, you know, when you come into our buildings, when we do open, the safety shields are in the computer labs throughout the district, great areas. Additional staff, again, is being assigned to cleaning, disinfecting, we have signage, you know, throughout all of our buildings, probably similar to what you see when you go shopping, you go into those big box stores, you know, they've got the signage on the floor, they've got the arrows, you know, directional, they, they want you to go down each aisle. So, we're going to, you know, we have the same stuff, you know, and we're preparing the buildings, so when we do go back face-to-face. You know, we have the staff doing a health-safety screening each day, and we have the additional cleaning PPE equipment that's been deployed out for buildings.
Hold on, did your mic?
I think your mic turned.
Was it talking loud enough?
There you go. There you go.
I usually don't get cues to that. Safety measures for the bus, and I think that we've talked about this before, that we are gonna have hand sanitizer on the buses. Drivers are gonna have reinforced the mask use, we have, we will have masks with the students. Drivers were trained on the proper use of personal protective equipment, and like we said, we will between routes, disinfecting the buses and at the end of each day.
Do you wanna try to mic, because I think yours cut out again.
Is my mic cutting?
It comes like close.
I don't know if you're putting your hand over.
I don't know why. Maybe it's, maybe I'm too close? Can you hear me out?
Yep.
All right. So, you could go to the next one, Tim, the board meeting presentations. Okay, so, just to kinda recap very briefly, you know, as a board, we had met on August 11th. We talked about the different options. I'm not gonna go into those in great detail, because I think we all pretty much understand what those are. The, you know, the 100% remote start of the year, the virtual, and the K-12 face-to-face. We talked about the K-2 in-person, the grades three through 12 remote, then we had the hybrid, face-to-face, and the virtual. You know, students coming every other day. On August 19th, the board, we met again, and at that time, decided to start the school year as full remote. And September 16th, we met, we talked about quite a few different hybrid options, and I know we probably, you know, some watching from home, their eyes were probably blazing over with all the options, but that's something that we wanted to present the board, and the board had asked for, you know, what are the different options, what are districts doing? So, you know, as we move forward, we're just updating the board so they could make a decision as we move forward. So, we had the, we had the hybrid options of, you know, starting out the school year and having the, you know, having the Wednesdays or Fridays off, and we have half-students in for periods one, two, three, the other half-students in for four, five, six. We also had the K-12, all students face-to-face. We talked about middle school block. So, we've gone over, you know, pretty much, you know, all the options that are out there. Go to the next slide. What I wanted to show here is how to return face-to-face when the board makes that decision. And I just, these are just examples of a slow return. The board could extend it, eliminate it, whatever it shows, but, you know, what you're looking at in a slow return, the objective of the slow return is to get students acclimated to the new district procedures, you know, by grade level. So, we would, we could bring in the young fives and the kindergartners, first graders, sixth graders, ninth graders, you know, into the buildings first, and that would give us the opportunity to go over the safety measures and the safety protocols that we're asking students to follow. Then we could bring in, as we progress forward, and the elementary, for instance, would be the second and third graders, fourth and fifth, and then with all students. So, those examples show how you could do it in a week, but again, if the board chose to do it over an extended period of time, you could do that too. But what I wanted to show in these examples, and I wanna, you know, repeat, the objective would be is to get all the students to understand what the protocols and what the procedures are gonna be as far as wearing masks, hand sanitizer, how we're gonna exchange classes moving in the hallways, you know, you know, creating as much distance as we can, you know, in the classrooms and things like that. So, that would also give the staff the opportunity to adjust, you know, over time. You know, some of the districts around us, I know I can answer that question, you know, I know Lance Cruz did a delayed start, did not start till the 14th, so they, so they moved the start of the school year back. I know Romeo started the year with the half-days, I believe they're every other day, doing that hybrid model, and they're, you know, how they're reaching out to their students, whether they be at the classroom or at home, is a virtual live. So, it's a webcam in the classroom, and it's live, and that's how they're reaching out. Richmond, they're in, they just started school here, is my understanding, as they normally would, and they started here again with the virtual live, similar to what, you know, Romeo did, having the, you know, webcams in the classroom, and then reaching out to the classroom students and virtual kids at the same time. Our media started early before, you know, Labor Day with all their students, and they are doing a version of the virtual live, you know, also. So, that, what I wanted to do here with this is just give the board an idea, you know, if we wanted to do a slow return, some ideas on how that could be done. How to return face-to-face. In the elementary, I know the concerns from staff has been the face-to-face and virtual and how to juggle that, and we have been working on that, and we would be separating the instruction face-to-face and virtual academy students. So, those will be separated students and teachers for the elementary when we, you know, when the board decides to go face-to-face and virtual. This will give attention to if you decide virtual, if you decide face-to-face, this will give the attention needed. The prep time, as you can see there, would be an hour and 47 minutes, that, you know, students are gonna get out about an hour and 40 minutes early under that, and currently, your teachers average about 53 minutes of prep. So, this adds about, you know, about an hour, you know, onto that, and again, students would have an early release. Again, this delivery model ensures class content and pace remains the same, you know, for all students, virtual academy students, you know, and making this change may be assigned to different teachers. So, we may have some changes, and no matter what scenario, I think the face-to-face at the semester, we could see some additional changes. You know, we're gonna have to adjust as we go forward. We have students that are attending other districts. If we had those students come back, you know, we're gonna have to adjust to those, you know, to the students returning. The secondary prep time, you can see, will be two hours. Currently, it's 59 minutes at the middle school, 58 minutes, you know, at the high school. And again, we would do a early release, those students would be getting out about an hour, an hour and 20 minutes. We're not able to, I shouldn't say we're not, but in order to separate it in the secondary, you know, we discussed that, we have to, you know, hire additional staff. At your high school, you know, some, you know, some of the school districts for their high school virtual are using like a private party, you know, for their credit, to help support the teachers, you know, in your high school. That's similar to what Lance Cruz is doing, using that vent, I believe, they're using that, something that we could look into also. That would be similar to, as before, you're familiar with the E2020, you know, our credit recovery students and how we help keep those students on pace. It's, it's similar to that. And you can, face-to-face options, we talked about those. We know the block, and I'll start at the bottom, we know we talk about the block every other day, you know, where students would come in for a sec, I'm sorry, students would come in every day, but that would be the first, second, third hour, one day, then they'd come in for four, five, six. That block really, I think, for your, you know, secondary teachers, that really you're going from one-hour instruction to additional hour or more of instruction, and that is pretty difficult to prepare for, you know, for we would, you know, transition the students back. We have gotten input from the teachers on that, and I've gotten input from parents. That's not a, from what has been shared with me, that's not a popular option, but I did want to share, because we did discuss, we had the hybrid, that's every other day, you know, you could do it with half your students, you know, coming in every other day. Then we have the face-to-face K-12 with the shortened day, you know, the, you know, or what I call the early release. And I also, I wanna remind the board that part of the roadmap for return to school is the board each month, every 30 days, has to review this plan. So, no matter what plan you choose as a board, you have to review it, you know, each month. So, that's what, you know, we'll be doing going forward. You can go to the next, so this is the last slide. So, what we had, you know, what we have to discuss is how to return back to school when the board makes that decision, the slow start option, you know, if that's something that we want to do. And again, that gives us the opportunity to get the staff activated, it also gives us the opportunity to get students to understand what our safety protocols, procedures will be when they return to school. We have some options on how to return face-to-face that we discussed, and we have how to deliver virtual. So, it really, I think, gets boiled down to, you know, these, you know, these three questions that we need to discuss further today, so we can plan going forward. As a board, is there anything I left out, or any questions, or?
One question I have on stage, why are the shortened days, hour and a half, especially?
Why the shortened days?
Yes.
Well, that gives the, you know, because of the change, that gives the opportunity for the staff to reach out to a lot of the students and, and prepare. And this is gonna be a first of all for your staff, so this gives, this gives, you know, for instance, your elementary, you know, you're separating your virtual and your face-to-face. They still can collaborate on the curriculum and making sure that, that, that everybody is on the same page across the board, and the same with, gives your secondary teachers the opportunity, because they're gonna be doing both, the opportunity to, you know, plan and, and answer questions to students or if they needed group chat.
I understand the secondary, because they're, they're doing both virtual and regular, but I don't, if the, if the model you're proposing isn't having the same classroom teacher and the same virtual teacher, I don't, I can see extra time, but not an hour and a half every day, early release. I understand the secondary, but I don't understand the elementary.
Okay, I, well, I, that's why it's, I think, every 30 days, the board could review it, but I think giving the, giving the staff the opportunity to prepare an elementary and secondary for the students, and also gives us an opportunity to, you know, we're bringing the custodians in early, so we're gonna be sanitizing buildings. So, there's a lot of advantages to it by having that early release.
That means we have to, parents have to be home at 1:30, 2 o'clock.
Your elementaries, you, you know, they're getting out an hour and 40, I think it's closer to one. I don't have the exact times.
No, I understand.
Yes, it's 2:15, well, the nine o'clock start is out at 2:15, so.
So, I guess I'll throw it around to everyone sitting in the room, and then we'll reach out to the two board members that are joining us virtually. John, do you have any questions or comments, Mr. Superintendent?
No.
Ms. Roses?
Just one, if we did decide to do a third-party vendor for secondary, would that limit the ability for people that are virtual to take certain classes?
Uh, no, but I think that your high school teachers could, you know, we do it in-house with our teachers. I think our teachers could do, you know, a better job than hiring a private company. I mean, it's gonna be a lot of work, it's a juggle, but using our own staff or, there also is, you know, the, the cost, you know, if you're gonna use a private company, the cost is probably, we figured around $400,000 to do something like that. So, you're gonna, you're gonna buy the curriculum, you're gonna buy the class outlines, which is your money.
Ms. Perkmeier?
Was there any possibility with the secondary, you know, pulling maybe for the core classes, students into a virtual group, like, you know, elementary's gonna be separated?
Yeah.
For core classes, could they be maybe pulled into a group and then findings of better makeshift way for electives to be offered or run to even more ease that burden? I know there will still probably be, I know there will still probably be some teachers who might, there may be some that teach electives all day long who might get short end of the stick, it seems, but trying to adjust, you know, every hour to doing both things. But I'm just wondering, you know, for like your math classes or things, would we have the capability to pull and separate the students out and make a virtual math teacher for, you know, for some of the core classes?
Okay, so, if I understand you correctly, as far as, instead of them having an individual teacher, try to, try to have maybe one teacher do math 912 that are, or like grade level?
Or even just, you know, instead of that, if you have a teacher who's dedicated to both things, or maybe if it's gonna be both, say you, just for simplicity, if you have, you know, enough for one section of algebra, you know, in the high school, so maybe that teacher doesn't have an hour, you know, if we adjust schedules just a little bit, that teacher doesn't have a first hour, they do first hour online, you know, dedicated to that, instead, would we be able to make some of those shifts just so that, you know, so then that takes math off everybody's plate, you know? And it's kinda consistent for all virtual learners.
Yeah, of course, and the core subjects will move them up. I mean, as far as scheduling in the secondary would be, you know, change student schedules in secondary would be pretty difficult, but if, you know, if we did something like what Richmond does where they have the teacher reaching out live webcam, that would probably address, I think it would address a lot of that concern that the kids have virtual or face-to-face, would get the same instruction. And that's the other, I'm thinking, that's the other way to, that would be the other way to address it. But we're open to ideas, and that one I definitely will, you know, will look at.
And I also just agree with Mr. Middlestadt on the elementary. I don't see so much the need for the early dismissal. And I also just agree with Mr. Middlestad on the elementary. I don't see so much the need for the early dismissal. If, if those students are separated out and we're not, you know, putting this double duty on, on that staff. To me, I would like to see everybody trying to get back to as normal or typical of a school day as possible. So, you know, and, and it seems like that's something that it's, it's hard to take away or change. While we do reevaluate month to month, and if catastrophic things happen that have to make changes, yes. But my hope is that we're not going to continue to put these changes on parents. So to, to try it for like a month and then change the dismissal time yet again, to me seems a little more chaotic than just sticking with something. That's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, we could look at, more which we could look at reducing the release time for the, you know, elementaries. You know, part of that is, you know, your buses are tiers, so buses that take the high schools home, take the middle schools home, and then take the elementary kids home. But, you know, that I understand, and, you know, we'll look at that, the early release for the elementary.
Elementary's last, so.
How to reduce it?
Yep.
How to reduce the release time at the elementary?
And I, I guess my last comment then is, you know, to that extent, I would like to see specials offered in the building. I know that those can, I, I've spoken with some specials teachers, you know, it's a struggle to try and teach a curriculum, you know, really, like we said last meeting, the specials are supposed to be, you know, turning work in, although I hear, you know, I know from a lot of parents, you know, at this point in virtual, that's, you know, they gotta make their priorities in their home, and sometimes they're not doing the specials at this point. And just based on, you know, just for kids, I feel like, especially at the elementary level, that's something that it seems like, you know, we should be all, trying to find a way to offer those to them, whether it's, you know, the dividers in our class or something, getting kids outside for gym in the meantime while we can. Just, you know, because I think after all of this that we've put these kids through, they need these outlets. And I, I, I fear that putting specials on virtual is backburnering them in a sense. And they're still not going to get the, you know, we, we've made efforts not to cut specials and things. And, and so I think we should stick with that and continue to, to offer those and, and give kids that, that release. You know, sometimes for some kids, specials are the reasons they come to school. So after all of this, that's something I would like to see maybe offered. Maybe putting those back in the day and putting the dismissal time back to, you know, your, your typical times is what I would like to see.
Let's go to Ms. Endershot if we could.
I'm still kind of digesting a lot of this, so I might have more to offer in, in a little bit. But I did have, because Ms. Burkmire hit on a few things, Mr. Middlem- Middlestad has already hit on a few things. But what Ms. Burkmire brings up about the specials, I have concerns about the specials as well. I voiced it at the last board meeting, but I feel they're just as valuable as the academics, and I don't want to cut them short. And she brings up a potential, you know, solution maybe to reiterate or bring them back into some kind of setting at the building, and if we do that, would we be able to potentially livestream that interaction to our virtual students? So that they're not only just, you know, I mean, it, they can at least see what's going on and feel what's going on and hear what's going on and still be able to participate in an art lesson or, you know, play along with a mu- musical instrument from home. I know it's not the same, but I just don't want to have a virtual system of where the kids are, you know, not getting the full value that the kids in school are getting. Just some food for thought.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, what, you know, part of it for the elementary challenge in trying to separate the face-to-face and virtual, you know, some of the kids we said, you know, are going to be switching teachers in, in the virtual. Like, in order to pull that off, you're using your Lit tutors and there are some reassignments for your current teachers in order to separate it. But the idea of having the specials and not getting out as early is something we'll definitely evaluate and look at.
Mrs. DeWitt?
Well, I did, because prior to this, we had talked about the special being at home to give the additional time for teachers to prepare for both in, in, in class and virtual instruction. And when I was looking over my material, I did call Mr. Wedge and asked him about the special scenario, but it, it gives us, what my concern was, and I voiced this to Mr. Wedge, was I do think there is a need for additional prep time because at the elementary level, they're planning for seven classes technically. And if you are having teachers on virtual and teachers in the classrooms, you have certain deadlines where even at a month at a time, you're moving students maybe out of virtual back into the classroom. This entire process is huge, and it's going to take a tremendous amount of effort and collaboration to bring everybody along. And I believe Mr. Wedge did say that they'll use some of the special teachers to be able to make the separation of virtual and face-to-face. And so having the special at the end of the day at home, now that doesn't have to stay that way, but until we see what the staffing issues are, and until we know how much it's going to take collaboratively to bring teachers into the virtual setting, you know, honoring perhaps high-risk teachers who have to teach virtual as a go- as opposed to going face-to-face. I think that Vic, you could make very sound reasoning that those teachers are going to need that time. We have a tool, Atlas Rubicon, that we have developed over the last years where everyone is going to have to be teaching the same thing at the same time. Because if you have children that are coming back, let's say the end of the marking period, they can't have taken or been taught one subject matter, the first part of the month and another at the second. And then at the same grade, grade level, a teacher has flip-flopped them. And under normal circumstances, that doesn't matter. They can do that. But under these circumstances, everyone has to be on the same pla- page at the same time. Otherwise, when kids return from virtual, they would be missing subject matter or hearing subject matter for the second time. So I agree that, that it would be great to do that, but I also think that we have to be really careful that the plan that we develop is one that's solid. And we have to make sure that we have enough collaborative time and enough pieces in place and enough staff in place to make this work. And I think that segregating the virtual from face-to-face is an excellent idea. It's the best thing for kids, but it is not going to be without its challenges. And so that's why I would rather that we go a little more slowly and make sure that we are periodically evaluating through the time that we assign that this model will be followed and then go from there. And I, I, you know, appreciate comment from our directors, that's fine. But that was my initial understanding of why we were moving those specials up till after kids were home from school. And I think that parents would have to realize there are going to be a tremendous amount of changes. And I think that we have to be very protective of the time we have. And we have to be really conscientious in making sure that this is a constant, it's a pro- going to be a process, and it has to be, any good process has to be evaluated on a regular basis. So we're going to have to have concerns expressed, those, you know, committees formed. I know that they had committees, the virtual committee, the curriculum committee over the summer that did a lot of background work. But I also think that there is going to have to be something in place where we can get feedback of what is or is not working as well as it should be or could be, what are issues that have arisen with parents? Can we address them or we can't address them? But we're certainly going to look at them and see if they can be addressed. You know, yes, it would be great if we could have some remediation that in, at that after-school time that we could look at some programs whereby we provide, for example, private tutoring online for even our kids that are in school during the day, but would be available for additional help later after-school hours. I think that there are all those possibilities, but I think that we have to be very, very concise and have our path cut out so that teachers know what is expected of them, how they're going to be making sure that all material is shared at the grade level. I think that we have to make sure that parents are aware of the changes that might occur as a result of this plan. But I also feel that we have the rudiments of an excellent pathway to get our kids back into school.
So I'll, I'll add a couple of my comments, and, and I'll ask that the, at this point, probably that the board not make a motion to select a plan. I would much rather go to, even if we make a motion to table it to after open forum. I certainly would like to hear from our parents on what they think, what they've seen. And that may, may change one of your decisions or, or may not. So I'll solicit a motion here after a speed to table a vote on what we're planning on doing till after the open forum. But I agree with Mr. Middlestad and Ms. Burkmire. It seems like elementary kids should be going the whole day, and that would include their specials. I know, it's, it sounds like we largely solve, if you will, the, you know, the elementary challenge that we have with the virtual being separated out from the face-to-face. As Ms. Burkmire mentioned, maybe we can spread out, you know, students. Quite honestly, I, I, if you're in third grade, whether you're at Ashley or you're at, at Lighthouse, perhaps we can have one virtual teacher that reconstructs both of those groups, even though they're in two different schools. It's important that our PLCs are together, that we're talking about what's being constructed in person as well as what's being constructed virtually. You know, we are only ten or eleven days into a hundred-day calendar. You know, certainly, change is never good, but the sooner we make change, if we're going to go to something along those lines, I would encourage that only for the sense, again, we're, we're five percent into the school year. We still have a hundred and seventy-four, a hundred and seventy-five days to go, hopefully. And making changes now is going to be easier than trying to make changes in November, where you might then be pulling a student out of, out of the virtual teacher's class. So we, we need to figure out how to solve the high school piece with the virtual separation from the in-person. Certainly, I'm open to any other suggestions anybody else might have, hopefully figure that piece out. So if the board's okay with that, I would really like to move into, I guess I'll solicit a motion to, to table any kind of vote until after we look at the forum. Motion by Mr. Grue, second, supported by Mr. Moses. I think we're going to have to call a roll there, Ms. Middlestad.
Yep, Ms. Burkmire? Ms. Burkmire?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. DeWitt?
Yes.
Ms. Endershot?
Yes.
Grue?
Yes.
Ms. Middlestad?
All right, thank you, sir. With that, we're going to move into our open forum. I'll count on my A D assistance, Tim, to help me out and move through, whoever may sign up on our Zoom or have their hand.
So while he's looking up, I do want to add that, you know, yes, part of this is, you know, taking in fact that some of the board members are looking at the possibility of shortening the prep time and then specials brought in during that time or considering the, especially with the elementary. And that's what we will do currently coming. I mean, we will, you know, once we have direction from the board, A D want to go face-to-face. The details of, of shortening the elementary time, the details of the specials, you know, we will, the administration will get together, do that. I know that it will be meeting the A D A on some of that, and, you know, I get plenty of teachers that, that'll call me or give me, you know, information of, you know, what they, you know, what their thoughts are on it. So the details of the plan of, you know, having students go later in the elementary, we will work on that. And, you know, maybe it's not, maybe it's more than that. It's a little less than that, but we'll work on that. And having the special at the elementaries, we'll work on that, how that would be possible. We'll work on even.
Even I know, I know some districts are doing specials in the form of like blocking them where you do music for so many weeks, you do music every day for so many weeks, add your special. That could mitigate, you know, the amounts, I know it's not ideal, you know, I would love to see kids doing gym every day or, you know, more frequent, but you can mitigate how many kids that those specials teachers are coming into contact with at once. Obviously, there's still going to be more than your classroom teachers by the nature of what they do. But, you know, even if, I, I, I can appreciate and understand Ms. DeWitt's thoughts for the, as she's done that, it dawns on me, you know, that, you know, if, if a kid has to stay home in quarantine and then make their way back to school, you know, or do something like that, or it also would depend how, at what time points we might allow virtual students to switch back into school. You know, if we lessen those times that are available, and I'm not saying, I, I don't know if that's something we would do or not, but, you know, that, you know, only at the semester at this point you could change, you know, as long as then we know that the teachers, you all need to be at this point at the semester change, that might make that a little easier. So I, but I can see where she, you know, believes there, there's a little bit more prep time needed. But maybe like on the slide where it showed an elementary going from nine to two fifteen. Usually our nine o'clock school get out more at like four. So, you know, if we can move that up, it maybe, maybe we only need a half hour or something. And in that time, we can solve a block special or something to that point. Just seems like a, maybe a workaround, give kids a break and a little bit more normalcy with the specials and accommodate, like Ms. DeWitt said, to that level of it, is my idea.
Yeah, so I, you know, if, you know, once the board decides, I want to do virtual face-to-face and how we're going to start the year, we will work with the staff and all those that we need to make it successful. We'll begin and we'll be working with them to give more detail. Once that decision comes, we'll move forward with making it happen and getting back to board and saying where the challenges might be. But those are good ideas. We will, we will discuss it, how to get the specials for the elementary.
So as we move into open forum, I just want to remind everybody that per board policy, we do have a three-minute speaking time in the board policy, and I think, I want everyone to have the opportunity to speak. But we've got to really limit it to, to three minutes because we probably have close to fifty or sixty people that want to speak tonight. So I'm going to do my best to try to keep, keep the timer going. Please finish your thoughts around three minutes. I just don't want to cut your off sentence. But we have to be able to move through all the folks that we have in session.
Tim?
I'm going to assume this is Deb. Here she didn't put her last name, Hunter.
Deb Hunter? Well, look, sir, who's next?
Locky?
Yes, this is Barna Locke. I'm so sorry. I was wondering, I signed up my kids for a remote learning for just for this semester. If it will be decided that the face to face will be available, can I, is there a clause that I will be able to switch her from remote learning to face to face?
Yes. Yeah. Once we have the direction, we know there's some follow-up surveys that we're going to have to do. We're going to have to reach out to parents and re-ask the question, who would be staying virtual?
Okay, thank you so much.
John Norris?
What was the name, Tim?
John.
John Norris?
You know, yeah, you know.
I know, S I R.
I think you have an unmuted.
All right, let's move on.
One says iPhone. They're not unmuting either. One more time. All right, the other one is Jamie Petron.
Jamie Petron. Let's see if we can get you unmuted here.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hear me?
Several times. Go ahead, Jen.
Okay. I'm here as president of the ABA on behalf of the Anchor Bay teaching staff to simply say this. We are tired. At a time when we should be feeling refreshed, happy and ready to be back to a brand new school year, we are tired. We are tired of having to sit through these long board meetings anxiously awaiting our fate. We are tired of getting information last minute. We are tired of being told one thing only to have it change over and over again. We are tired of putting in 12-hour days, losing time with our families and never ever seeing an end in sight because the job we love has become nearly impossible and has the potential by the action of this board to become even more so. We are tired of the expectations of our jobs being in constant limbo. We are tired of being stressed out, not knowing what lies ahead. As president of the ABA, I have feverishly been giving input to those who will listen since June that can be simplified into two bullet points. Bring this back safely by having a physical plan that includes proper safety protocol and procedures. And two, separate out the virtual academy and face-to-face students at all levels so that one classroom teacher is not responsible for a completely impossible task of doing both jobs at the same time. Give all of our Anchor Bay students a top-notch quality education, not impose a plan that potentially shortchanges all kids. Let me make it clear, our teachers want to be back in school with students. And the teachers who cannot, because of medical conditions that require them not to be, should be given the option to be virtual instructors. Please, while considering and voting on a plan tonight, think about your teachers, the things you are asking us to do, the expectations you are laying out and the human limitations to those expectations and responsibilities. Thank you.
Kelly Upton?
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear? So I have a couple of questions. I signed my son up for the virtual academy back in the beginning of the school year when it was guaranteed that he would have a live teacher as long as I could commit to a full semester of school. In my understanding it now that there could be a possibility that if we go back face to face, that he could lose that live teacher and he would have to do pre-recordings. And then my second question, my second question is, if we go back face to face, has the board and administration took into consideration so that virtual kids could learn at the same time as face-to-face kids with putting cameras in the classroom? So that the teacher only has, and I'm not going to pretend to be a teacher, I'm not going to pretend to know all the logistics behind it. But so that they don't have to go between virtual and face-to-face, they could be teaching both virtual and face-to-face at the same time?
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Go ahead, Hunter. I'm sorry.
No, part of what we discussed is the idea that if you have the webcams.
I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you.
There are people that are doing it now with the webcams reaching out to the classroom and virtual kids at the same time. So I don't believe that we change for Mrs. Upton's child. I don't know what grade level that I could, I could have the principal or one of the directors follow up. You know, again, it's what the board, ultimately, what the board of kids would address that.
Ms. Upton, what grades are your students at?
I have one student, third grade at Ashley.
So based on what I'm hearing, Mr. Woodside, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see a tremendous amount of changes coming at the elementary level. Based on the discussions that we've had here tonight, maybe I missed heard something.
Okay.
And trying to figure out how we're going to separate out that face to face and that virtual piece is significantly easier in the elementary than it is in our secondary. I think Mr. Woodside is already moving the fact that we're struggling to try to figure out how, how to segregate those two students in the secondary. You know, it sounds like we probably could outsource the service for a $400,000 a year price tag. I'm not sure if that's the board's pleasure or not. We'll find out as discussions continue tonight. And certainly, I think I may have heard a number of close to 20 teachers that we need to hire to fulfill the requirements of secondary, have them to do the segregation. Is that about correct?
Yeah. I know Jill and I talked about in the middle school, 22 levels would be five additional staff. But again, if we did something similar to what Richmond is doing, we'd be able to reach out to virtual kids and face to face, you know, at the same time. For the elementary and separating, there's going to be, there's going to be, some of the students will have a different teacher for virtual. We're going to change the teacher they have now, they may not have. Once we have a direction flow, there are some, some students that have to change to the virtual.
Sure. I thank you for your comments and your questions, by the way.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Tim?
Brian Brown?
Brown?
Yes, I was just wondering if we missed kind of the beginning of this whole thing. So will there be an option of the children going back in school? My son is in sixth grade, so it's middle school, Nor.
So the superintendent made a presentation earlier in the meeting, sounds like the main event is that included the very option of going back to face to face and how that would look, including some stagger starts and some early endings. And I'm sure the presentation will be posted here shortly after the meeting. But yes, that was the premise of what was presented. And then I hope that the, you know, the board's able to come to a consensus on tonight.
How long will it take? I mean, when will the decision down as far as whether this is going to happen or not? Beside or?
We're evaluating and I'm hoping that the board would make a motion to go one way or the other tonight with some stricter parameters in line of what our expectations are of returning to school.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to say that we were advocating for the option to go back to school. It's been a huge mental stress on both of us who both work from home as well as my son who's sitting in front of a computer with very little social interaction. And we appreciate the consideration to have them have the option to go back.
Well, thank you both for your comments. Tim?
Drew Smith?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So I just had a couple of quick questions and I just want to preface that I understand that I'm not a teacher and I don't go through what teachers go through on a day-to-day basis, teaching in school. So I really truly don't understand. So I don't mean the question with malice. But what, what barriers do our teachers face to teach our students face to face while live streaming to a set of children that are virtually attending the class? And that question partially stems from the fact that if we're going to separate the two completely, where we have different teachers for in-class and different teachers for virtual, if that's the route it's chosen, what happens if a child gets sick or a child's parent gets, parent gets sick and has to self-quarantine the whole family? Now we're disrupting that child from, say, if they're in class, now we have to take them out of class, put them in a virtual platform and have them in front of a different teacher that's possibly at a different pace or a different point in the curriculum. So again, my question is basically, what are the barriers that the teachers actually face to doing both other than it being kind of a new technology, maybe for most of them?
So I can, you know, I obviously don't speak for the teachers. I am not a teacher in the district. But there certainly was and is a level of discomfort of having the live stream, including teachers and students, you know, being streamed out to the web. And that's been a concern that's been raised by some of the teachers and administrators. And I'm sorry, I forgot the second part of your question. Oh, I'm sorry. If we have to quarantine someone, yes. So that one of the dangers of going back to face to face is the reality that your child could be in Mrs. Smith's class when he or she's in face to face and goes over to Mrs. Jones' class for virtual. So that's certainly a very real possibility and certainly something that I would encourage parents to consider that may be wanting to send their kids back to face to face. That could happen.
May I interrupt a minute?
Absolutely.
To address the other issue, that's why it's so important that we have the main curriculum and everyone is following the same pacing chart in Atlas so that we have all of those students learning the same material at the same time. And if a child does get sick, he can go into a virtual classroom for a week or two during quarantine, then go back into his classroom and he's still going to be in the same spot in the curriculum.
That's correct, Ms. Whit. Thanks for jumping on that. I mentioned that in my comments that, you know, our PLCs are working through buildings and we need to make sure that we're teaching the same things on a daily basis at the same grade levels, same classes. Exactly for that reason, in the event that they do have to go over to a virtual setting for a week or two while they possibly may be being quarantined.
And if I could ask for just one quick follow-up question, Ms. Whit, thank you for pointing that out. I fully agree with that, that it's, it could be quite confusing to the child should they have to bounce back and forth. But again, without malice, my question was, what are the barriers that they face? Outside of just being uncomfortable. I mean, at the end of the day, we're all uncomfortable with new technology. We're uncomfortable with the decisions that we have to make for our own family and what we feel is important. And, you know, we kind of have to weigh the between, you know, even going to work, you know, we're being told that going to work is a, is an opportunity for us to catch it, which they can shut our whole family down. So I understand that it's a new technology and it may be uncomfortable. But what is the actual barrier to being able to teach at the same time when really you're live streaming? I just don't, I guess the way I look at it is I teach finance classes to professionals. And at certain points, I have people in front of me and I also have people that are virtual at the same time. Was it weird at first? Yeah, absolutely. But you adapt to it and you, and it can be done. So my question is, is there, are there any barriers that I'm not aware of? Just so that I know kind of where the teachers are coming from and where, how that, you know, basically weighs on your decision.
Well, I could address the elementary level. Elementary is quite different than secondary. You have a lot of more individual interaction with students. And it would be with a teacher walking up and down the aisle continually, pulling kids into small groups. It would be very disjointed instruction compared to secondary could be done. And I, at the secondary level, Mr. McDonald, you can speak to that more than.
Yeah, I would love to jump in. I know that when I talk to our colleagues in Richmond, when we're banging our heads against the wall, that, that's one area where, you know, that, that administration, superintendent and my colleague over there say they, they're not having as many issues. They're able to transition kids back and forth with the cameras, just like this gentleman suggested that, Mr. Smith, that they're teaching that portion of time where they're providing the instruction, making sure they're answering questions and so on with, with virtual and the face-to-face kids. And if, if that, this way, the, the teachers remain the same so that if a kid does have to quarantine for a period of time, they're with their same teacher and classmates and learning this, you know, the same class. So I don't know that there's barriers. I'm finding that it's working very well in neighboring districts.
Thank you.
Thanks for jumping in there, Ms. Woodside. And thank you for your comments as well. Tim?
AV parent?
Login user of AV parent?
Hi.
Hello?
I wanted to speak tonight because I again want to remind some of you that your seats are up for election this November. I have zero use for you on this board if you are not going to vote according to what the parents have been promised and are asking for. You were voted in to be a voice for the parents of this district and only two of you are even listening to us. Board members are individuals elected by their community to serve as representatives of the public. Specifically, I would like to address Ms. Henderson. If you are not going to vote for in-person tonight, full face-to-face in-person, I can promise you, your seat will be gone come November. We have no use for you on this board and I know many parents who feel the same way I do, especially after your performance last week. You brought nothing to the table other than snide comments toward.
We're going to go ahead and move on to the next person. I apologize. We don't have the person's name and obviously at this point it would appear that it was retaliatory to ask for it. You know, unfortunately, the board policy does call for folks to identify themselves. So we're going to go ahead and move on. Tim?
Jennifer Barber?
Hi, I have a quick question. I graduated from Anchor Bay last year and I was just wondering what kind of, like hypothetically, if a student came into the classroom and had like COVID-19, hypothetically, what kind of actions would you be taking?
What we procedure in place is part of the return, return to learning program has put out is what we would do is contact the health department, take, talk to those healthcare professionals on the process that we will take. I know that some of the districts that have had students test positive for COVID, they, the students themselves, the students that were with that person are also quarantined. I know that we had an instance, you know, here at Anchor Bay with the football team. And I know that it's about four students that were quarantined because of the one COVID situation. But to answer your question, the, we would consult with the health department and and when we talk to them, they would take each situation case by case. So I don't have an exact number, like how many students would be COVID positive. So I don't have an exact number, like how many students would be COVID positive before the school would be closed. Now, I'd have some good ideas, but we would consult with the healthcare professionals. We would share with them the situation, the information that we have. And they would then advise us on what we would need to do. That answer your question?
I think she got kicked off. I didn't do anything. All right, sir. Let's move on to the next one. Dawn?
Hi, yes, I just raised my hand to make a comment as far as the live streaming. I feel that you're not considering that that would be a privacy concern for the students in the classroom. It should not, their classroom should not be viewed to the public. Due to kids that could have special needs and special learning abilities that would be on display for every parent to see from their home. And I think it's also unfair to teachers to expect them to do both at the same time to live stream from their classrooms. I feel that you need to designate which teachers would be face to face and which ones would be virtual based on the needs of the teachers. If they have their own high-risk categories and their own health or in their families, then they could volunteer to be virtual teachers or be assigned to that. And have face to face for the remaining classes. This could be divvied up by school or by district. In my district, we did it as a district instead of as a building to reassign them to, you know, where they needed to be. So I just want the community to be aware of that that could impose privacy issues. And also I feel it, it just creates a disjointed instruction for both. Those that are receiving face to face instruction and those that are getting live streamed. Because then the teacher has to stop, make sure technology is working, make sure this student over here can, you know, see what she's doing or hear what she's doing. And and going back and forth, I just feel it weakens the instruction for both groups. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And that's definitely something that was shared by some teachers and administrators, just having that live look in on a classroom. Because quite frankly, you never know what kids are going to do. And that's, when I say kids, I mean everyone from K through 12. So that's certainly a concern of hearing that, having something get out there that perhaps would be embarrassing for you to listen to. Tim?
Rihanna?
One more time.
Yes, I'm here. I I'm not sure if this is any question that you'll be able to answer. But my husband and I made a decision to leave our children who are six and nine in the Anchor Bay School District because we're happy with the district. We, you know, we love the school that they're in. My husband and I do not have the luxury of working from home. We go to work every day. My children are required now to sit in front of a computer. I'm not sure if anybody here has seen what it's like to have a six-year-old sit in front of a computer. And then be asked to navigate her own instruction. I'm not in any way putting this on the teachers. I feel bad for them as well. I'm, you know, I, does anybody have any solution for how we go to work and be able to provide for our family? And we're left basically choosing between our children's education and being able to maintain our household and bring in an income. I I can't, I would imagine there's other parents like me who are desperate to get them back in school. And this board made a last minute decision to go completely online, which then left us. No, no, at that point, no option to go anywhere or do anything else. So please, I am begging and hopefully there are other parents out there that are begging that you please make a decision and stick with it. And hopefully it's face to face because our children, let me remind everybody, have not been in school since March. They have been out of school for six months. Online instruction is not the same. I'm a PhD professional who has taught. It's not the same. Our kids are falling behind. This school will. Not have the same prestige that it's had. Its test scores will go down. There are other districts doing it successfully. Please, I beg you to let them go back to school.
Thank you.
Some of Mike's iPhone?
As as our participants are getting on, you could clearly state your name for us. That would help. Again, that is part of the.
Hello?
Name and address is supposed to be, at a minimum, a name. That would be great. Thank you for looking for Mike's iPhone.
Yep, I'm right here. Can you hear me?
I can, sir.
Okay, my name is Michael Orakowski. And I, I'm a, you guys cut off that last one because she didn't identify herself. But she had a point that I agree with, that you guys are all up. It's an election year. And I mean, you guys have had so much time to figure this out and you haven't, you guys still, I mean, you're coming up with excuses. It's all it is. It's excuse after excuse. I don't, I don't understand what it is that you guys do on a daily basis. It's kind of frustrating. I have two kids that go to that school. Face to face interaction, especially in elementary school is a is a must. This virtual schooling is doing nothing. First of all, I don't want my kid on a computer because all they do is go to YouTube. They don't want to do schoolwork, number one. And second of all, I urge you guys to vote for in in-school, in-person, face to face interaction. That's what kids need nowadays. I don't. This is, it's unbelievable. It has come to this point. Every other school district around here has figured it out and they're doing it. And you guys are, you're way behind everybody. I don't, I don't understand. I'm frustrated. I'm sorry that I I'm talking like this. But this is what it is. Thank, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
That's it? No, there's no more other hand?
No other hands? That's it? All right, I guess at this point, I should probably throw back to my board members and kind of open up for comments and then.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to go ahead and move that we approve option one, in-person learning. But also use the Romeo-Richmond virtual live model purchase.
Mr. Superintendent, can you clarify what option one is? Or Tim, do you put the slide back up on the screen for everybody? That would be great.
Well, you see, you're saying option one, you're talking about face to face and. Right, okay. And I just, I'm just being more specific on what virtue is. Okay, and I I think, you know, as, you know, you know, as we've gone over this. I think the detail is, you know, how we would do virtual, how we would do face to face. So you've answered both of those. And then the next question would be, how would we start at school? You know, as far as the slow.
I understand. I just want to get this out of the way.
Okay.
So I believe I've got a motion. Or is there a second? Second, second by Mr. Giroux, that allows us to have some more conversation. The face to face, you said that Romeo slash Richmond, a virtual live process.
We, many times the people have come to our meetings saying, other people are doing it. Why don't you do what other districts are doing and having success and have their already learnings? And this issue of a virtual teacher, a non-teacher, and keeping curriculums aligned. Somebody gets sick in the regular classroom, they're going to jump into a virtual classroom. You got to make sure everything, there's no, in this case, no disruption. Your child's in the same class with their classmates. They have more interface with that. You're working with your local school. I just think that these processes that other districts have been very successful with. Right next to us, right next door. I don't know why we would try to reinvent the wheel and try to add a lot of complexity with this thing and trying to figure it out. How are we going to keep everything aligned? Whatever we always simply have to do is, you know, have a long interface at the same time. You know, running the same same rate, same teacher. And I know it's a little maybe a little more complex, but the technology. I don't see why we wouldn't do what other people are doing successfully. And I had to recreate things and try to figure this thing all out again. I mean, I don't figure something out, but it just seems to me to be the better option and, you know. Your child stays in the same classroom now that he worked before. It's, I don't understand why we would.
So.
My, my thought on that is, I don't mind the model. I'm wondering if we have the same technology, both of those districts are one-to-one districts. I believe Richmond has 360-degree cameras installed in every classroom that can follow the teacher preset. You know, so the teacher's doing their thing like they said, you know, they're not, they're not stationary at a board. They're all, you know, they're, they're creating rooms, they're correcting students here and there, particularly at the elementary level. And so my, my concern there is, you know, I know of teachers that have purchased their own webcam. So and that you're talking to one camera, stationary into one place. So I I'm not sure that we have the technology to fully mimic that. And have the same success.
Mr. Wood's second one?
Yeah, I could, I could have.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood, sorry.
I've spoken to a number of teachers from other districts that are doing both in elementary. And it is, it is extremely challenging, even with bringing the kids on Zoom or with a webcam. It's a different situation at elementary level. And so I believe that separating the two is, you know, I, last week. We had a number of of parents that said, well, what about us, the virtual kids? Why are they not getting the same interaction? Why are they not, you know, we're not giving them. As much attention, so to speak, as we are to kids that are face to face. And I think that that's why it became. If we could possibly do it to separate the two, then you would have a teacher who was focusing strictly on the virtual instruction. Could do the follow-ups and make sure that we have an insured curriculum being presented. So right now, I, I still feel that that virtual separation, even if it's for a month. Two months is going to allow us to address some of the concerns that our teachers have. And I think that this has been a challenge across districts. That perhaps many of you that aren't in the schools like I am and in other districts. To hear many of the challenges that they're facing on a regular basis. And in addition, trying to keep all the kids safe and washing off desks and making sure everybody has masks and so on. So to me, I would like to pursue that separation at elementary for between the virtual and. Face to face, because I honestly believe that that is going to give us the best education for both. Elementary is challenging.
Those elementary students, by doing that model, I think you're ensuring that they will be sitting at a computer, the virtual students. You know, from nine to, you know, during those school hours, there's, it's not even, I don't think, as it looks now for us with intermittent breaks and back and forth. Because they have to follow their classroom teacher, what they're doing, you know, they might get a break, they have a break during lunch and such. But I mean, you are ensuring that virtual students will be sitting there basically for that whole school day period at their computer. And I don't know that at the elementary level or that side to go, we have other options.
Well, I think that a virtual teacher would give them breaks and would do activities in between and so on.
By by putting a live camera for elementary, you're ensuring that those kids have to stay at their computer at home.
I I wasn't suggesting it at the elementary level. I was.
I I was agreeing to Mr. Middlestat's motion.
Oh, I see. Okay, I'm sorry.
There's nothing to say about cameras. You take the manual play of the cameras, right?
I think if you, if the teachers thought they give the same quality education to the virtual learners by wearing a cam, they would have signed it for immediately. And I really don't think, and I believe their their concerns are correct, that they will not be able to give the the attention that the virtual learners need.
So what, go ahead.
Doing what you're.
Well, what better, what better situation to have kids having the same instructor, you have the same instruction at the same time?
The ones at home that need to ask a question, but the teacher can't get to it because they're tied up with four questions that are in front of the face.
They should all be equal.
You know what I mean? I just don't understand.
Should all be equal. If those virtual kids were in the classroom, they raised their hands and they asked.
Right.
Right, but why, why would it, why would it be any different?
Because I don't see how they would be able to raise their hand. We don't have like.
How do we raise our hand here? Technology's there.
Yes, and sometimes it takes us heavens to get to the person and raise their hand.
So why don't I go on to Ms. Hendershot, so she has the opportunity to comment because she may have her hand up and can't see her. And then we'll bring it back to Mr. Giroux as the motion support, to get some comments from him if he'd like. Ms. Hendershot?
My audio has been in and out. I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Green.
Did you get a motion that was made by Mr. Middlestat or by Mr. Giroux?
I heard the motion by Mr. Middlestat, but Mr. Moses was completely muddled. I didn't hear anything that he said.
Well, how about I just throw it to you for some, for some comments if you have any before we bring it back in-house, based on Mr. Middlestat's motion?
No, I think I understand all of the options that have been presented. I understand the motion. I understand that our teachers have concerns. I understand that our our district. Parents would like the face to face option. This is no different than it was a few weeks ago. We all understand the importance of having our students. Back in a classroom. And I think all of the information has been delivered and discussed. Quite thoroughly between last week and this week. So if anybody else has comments or concerns, the questions I had. Miss, um. I was going to, sorry, I got discombobulated there. Marie had brought up and had answered and addressed them already.
Okay, Mr. Giroux, any comments?
Well, right, I'm going to get there. Just give me a second. I I guess, I mean, I like the model of what he's saying gives back again, back to the parents getting the choice of. Virtual or face to face. It solves that issue of, you know, the, now, I'll preface it with, you know, when you just bring that up. Ms. Bergmeyer, and about the the elementary, if we've already solved an elementary problem, then we can do that. Then we can, in the elementary, if we amend this motion to be, in the elementary, we separate them. We have the face to face teachers and the virtual teacher. In the secondary, I don't see why we can't do it. I understand the teachers. Some teachers aren't going to like it. I get that. Teachers in other districts are doing it. Ones that I know, some of them like it, some of them don't like it, but they understand it's what needs to be done right now to to make things happen. Again, like I said last meeting, nothing's going to be perfect. Looking for that perfect option, it's not there. But to hear the parents that are out there that are frustrated, the students that are frustrated. I think this, the reason I seconded it is I think obviously discussion always helps things. And if we, if we change the, amend the motion for elementary to keep it at secondary with the taping. Now, how that taping looks, what I need to say can be done, 360 cameras, I, you know, I'm not sure. I mean, obviously, the one-to-one, we're not there, but it seems like everybody's virtual right now and she would probably have a good idea if there's any issues currently. And then what's, I know people are saying they're worried about their kids. And I I get the privacy issue, but what's different than right now? Every morning I wake up and I'm leaving for work and see my kids on Zoom and their whole class. I mean, it's their whole class is looking at the teacher, the teacher's on and being taped and kids are being taped. And so much so, they all got their Trump flags and pink flags. I mean, it's, it's just. So what, I I don't understand what the difference would be other than it's a live list. And I think it would work in the district. It would work. It kind of hits all the, everything that we need to do too much.
So before I do ask, we have two things that sounds like the board kind of summarize the comments. One, we obviously need to consult with Anita on the technology piece. And two, I don't know if we're approaching anywhere on to Union's current contract. And if this is a negotiated item, because it certainly seems like it might be a change in working conditions. I'm not an HR expert or a union expert, but I would like to give feedback on those two topics at this point if I could.
Yeah, I, well, I think to make any plan work, we do have teachers that are using, you know, the webcams right now, reaching out. Some are using that live. But if we were to do that for the elementary and secondary. We would work with staff on how we would go about. I think getting an attorney, it's kind of, you know, it's new ground. No technology's created itself in the market. But this is new ground and we would want to. and we would want to address any concern or all concern that the teachers would have about using the live webcam. So we definitely wanna work together on that and talk about, um, hey, direction the board is going, face-to-face, virtual, and that we would do the, we would do a virtual, uh, with the same teacher in the classroom, um, and virtual. So we would have to discuss that and work together on how that would work. As Steve said, yes, it is the other districts, you know, in our, our neighboring districts currently. I think the challenge, um, we don't have the 360 um webcams, but we do have webcams. We have three bucks, so they can show the work and the camera also show the, uh, the teacher. So there's some hurdles to get over, but we can get through those. We can, we can make it work. Depending on the direction that the board wants to go.
How about the technology piece, sir? Are we capable of streaming? Do we have a bandwidth to allow us to do that? I know we're trying to now, but we're obviously having some issues now, hearing the parents that are, you know, in the schools, losing their internet, whatever might be going on there, personally, you know. Uh, are we capable of, of taking on Mr. Middlestat's?
Yeah, I think the bandwidth, I think we can find, um, you know, trying to get every student to have a laptop. You know, this is what I said, you know, uh, reaching out to all those kids. We know that we've ordered more laptops. I think we have about, still another nineteen hundred. Um, we were hoping, uh, to get more this week, um, cause trying to get one each family. Um, I'd have to ask Adita, um, I think, you know, we have about a hundred, mm-hmm. Uh, I think we have about a hundred and seventy, but I don't know what your updated number is for that.
Yeah, right now, we have about a hundred and fifty families that originally requested that we still have as not given. However, as we're emailing them, many are responding back that they have found something else or purchased. So each day, that number has been going down.
And technology for the classroom.
Okay, I'm sorry, it was hard to hear exactly, but I think what you're asking me is how many webcams do we have? We have two hundred and fifty actual webcams and then almost every classroom also has a Ladybug and a document camera, which means every classroom um has the capability to have a stationary camera and then also one on their documents or their whiteboard if they so chose. Um, they can choose to keep the camera right on themselves. They could choose to do a two-shot. I mean, there, there would be flexibility. Webcams are also fairly inexpensive and easy to get. So we certainly would be able to provide teachers who want to do something unique or different or have to move about a room more in a specials room. We could, we can come up with creative ways to do that.
So with your motion, Mr. Middlestat, to uh some of the points that are raised, are you willing to amend it that we would go with the elementary kids and a regular schedule day, separating out the virtuals to virtual-only teachers?
All right, can I?
Yes.
Before we get, um, is Mr. Wedge or Mr. McDonald available? I need, I, I was under the understanding that we had to have the specials after student dismissal. Was that, was I not correct in that? Mr. McDonald or Mr. Wedge?
No, Marie, I can, I can answer that. That was part of the plan for, you know, how we would be doing special. Because when we looked at how to separate at the elementary, you know, we, we needed to order to do that. I think it was seventeen positions, uh, teachers altogether that we would need. So we would be, you know, we would need the, you know, literacy tutors, you know, uh, help. And I know there was a discussion about help from the special. But, um, from the board comments this evening, the idea that, um, they want us to reevaluate, um, the idea that we're getting out about two hours early and reevaluate how we're doing specials so we could do them, you know, during the school day. So I don't have the exact answer at this time, but that would be something that, you know, uh, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Wedge would work with the building principals and, and staff on how we would need that need. I do not have the answer at this time, but I think the board members were loud and clear that we would work on that and follow up to the board, um, what we were able to do.
Um, we also, you could extend the day by uh removing the additional prep time. That is the other option. So moving it later, not getting the additional prep time after school and um still leaves a special if, if those, if those certified special teachers would be needed to make the virtual model work. I'm just saying, you still could, it lengthened that day. And with you, uh, later dismissal. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll work with, you know, we'll work with the staff, um, how we would need, um, that required.
So there's a motion on the floor. If you could clarify a couple of points, Mr. Middlestat.
Yes.
Are you proposing that we return back in our elementary kids, um, would have a camera in the classroom as well as secondary?
That wasn't my motion, was.
Yes.
You wanna make a, make an amendment to that? We'll make an amendment if you'll accept it, I guess. Yeah.
I just got a couple, just a couple of questions, they've, they're concerned. Yeah, so how many virtual schools do we have possibly? I think eight, we have about eight hundred or more. We would obviously, once we get direction from the board, we're gonna reach out, see who is gonna stay virtual. So my, this, this is my other concern, I, let me think a second here, but, um, as a parent, we asked who's requesting virtual. I can't go to the anchor base school district and tell them how it's gonna be done. Can't tell me the teacher, you don't tell me what building, if the teacher's gonna be assigned from elementary. You can't tell me it's a special academy. You can tell me that you're gonna have a separate virtual teacher and you're gonna try to follow the curriculum and the regular. No, any, right, correct, so, no, no. So you can tell me what teacher I have, you know? Well, is it a regular teacher or a literacy, literacy teacher or what is it? Yeah, we, we will, we're not gonna be able to tell you the teacher we have. So we know the direction boards will go, then we will assume we know, but parents know. That's, that's not, that's not a challenge, any different than any gift.
I don't know what I was doing. Today, I, today I can swap out and have, be running. We, we won't be running for another week or so for virtual. If we decide to go face-to-face, you're not gonna have a virtual program and so if we go face-to-face.
Yeah, we'll be making, once we have direction from the board, we would be making adjustments, like I said earlier, that those on virtual, um, some of them are gonna be changing teachers. As soon as we knew who the teachers were, we'd make, you know, the, uh, students aware. But what I'm saying is that's, that challenge is no different than the other districts that are face-to-face and virtual. As far as creating a schedule, because, you know, you know, we have to reach out and see who is still doing it. You know, who, who still wants it virtual. Also, that was, that's fine. So I guess I'll amend my, I'll amend my, uh, motion to have the, um, elementary do the separate, have the secondary do the virtual, with the cameras. Is that right? Do the virtual, whatever you call it. Romeo, Richmond, and virtual. Bye. Are you, okay, so just so I understand, are we saying the virtual cameras K-12, the elementary will still be separated as we had proposed? So virtual, classroom, the elementary separated, secondary, we've already discussed, we're not able to do that. I don't totally agree, but I'm willing to compromise.
Yeah. Okay, second, yeah, secondary, they're gonna have the cameras and your parents can have their choice, either one. Same thing in the elementary, but the elementary, you guys said you figured it out as far as you'll have your online teachers and you'll have your in-class.
Yes, but my question was, we wanna get, so are we getting web and K-12, elementary separated, secondary? I think, I think. Is doing the.
We're doing second, second.
Secondary's doing the line. Got it.
I get it.
Okay. I don't totally agree, but I'm willing to compromise, see how it goes, maybe it's still successful.
And I, and I think it's something that we're gonna be looking at this every month, right? And we're gonna know within a month if it's. You know, and I think this hits on even when the, I know there might be some logistics when it comes to the talking with the teacher, but to her comments tonight, I mean, I get it, it's frustrating for the teachers. It's frustrating for the parents, it's frustrating for us up here. It's not like, none of us have had any meetings or not been talking about this or hasn't, you know, this is what we signed on to do, but these decisions are hard when you're balancing between, but they aren't, aren't easy when you're balancing between the teachers, parents, students. So this, I think this is a, a good option and one that we can move forward and see. It's working in other districts, we might as well do that.
Well.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, and I think a lot of people are wondering, and I know it sounds like, you know, there's definitely still, it's not something that's gonna be enacted tomorrow, but um, do you have a time, you know, what does the timeline look like, or what is a feasible estimate that this might be able to roll out? Are we talking three weeks from now, four weeks from now, next week? I, I guess, I'm sure parents are wondering, you know, how, when are, when will this, like, I know there's work to be done, so it's not gonna be immediate, but, um, you know.
I would say at home, we, at least what we talked about in the finance committee, we talked about here. Uh, I, I, obviously if they got a good reason why they can't do it, but when we set that October 2nd date, that wasn't a date that they were, if they're thinking about it. The reason, you know, Mr. President called these meetings is we would hope you would be ready to go on Monday, October 5th. So when we come in October 2nd for that meeting, we, we call, it's just, sign the paper, whatever, whatever they've gotta do, it's procedural, where Monday, we're a go and game on. So that, and then you can tell the parents that, and that's what we're gonna do. And it's no more, well, we're gonna do this, do that, survey, no, no. This is what we're doing. And then that's the way the surveys would be more true, when you do do them, because the parents are gonna know this is happening.
I don't even know if we need a survey at that point, if we have a hard.
You're, you.
Type in, you know, A and B, and they're laid out very clearly, you know, choose, choose your option. This is what it is.
For technology, like she's talking about those hundred and fifty computers. I, I don't, I agree with you, Ms. Bergmeyer, but.
I, I, I guess at this point, I feel like we can just, you know, buckle down on, you know, now we don't, you know, if this motion happens, virtual academy, you know, plans for elementary, you know, face-to-face plans. Um, and just buckle down and have a good, solid, you know, paper or letter that goes out saying, this is what it looks like, so it's laid out, parents can make their own decision, like they've been begging us for. You know, you know what you're getting into, there's no surprises at this point. Um, and I, I think that's the fair way, you know, obviously everybody is open. I, I think we've been clear that everybody's open to change their mind from what, you know, whatever they indicated in office. But, um, I, I think we just need to be crystal clear about what these things look like and what people are signing up for, so there's no surprises at this point. Because I feel like we have kinda dragged things along well enough. Um, and like I said, to that extent, I don't even know that a survey is worth our time. Um, if we are, if we know these are where we're going and we can hammer it out, hammer it out and offer it and let people choose and we move on.
Yeah, I probably used the wrong term, survey, but yes, we would reach out and say, who is going virtual? So I probably said, hey, if I ask a question, he's gonna go virtual, so. And that's what we will do. So if the board decided to start on October 5th, um, we can do that. That's what we've been planning for, and remember back at office, that's what we discussed, with face-to-face or face-to-face and virtual. I mean, no matter what the decision the board makes, these are, these all have challenges. Um, all the twenty-one districts in McComb County, I believe, well, I'm gonna say there's probably nine. I guess I have the exact number that are face-to-face right now. Yes, there are more districts talking about, um, going, you know, moving from virtual as we are and going face-to-face. Uh, so it's not the majority, um, you know, of the districts out there. So we're not, you know, behind, um, as far, you know, when you look at the twenty-one districts in McComb County.
Yeah, no, I don't, I mean.
We'll, we'll, you know, on the, the October 5th, yes, that's what we always plan. Um, and I think, uh, you know, the board, you know, making an adjustment to the elementary is a good thing. These are a lot of demands that, you know, we're putting on teachers and we need time to work with them, give them the support, you know, they need, so we can be successful and have a successful return, you know, back to school.
I think that, I, I agree with you, and like we said, we've had plenty of meetings. I, I don't think that behind, you know, people saying, think that we're behind and thinking that we haven't been working or we haven't had since June or we had, all these things that were out there. You had multiple sides trying to make it work. You got the teacher group, you got the admin, you got us, you got, so I think at this point, or right now, to this point, Bergmeyer's point is, we're, we're in the, we're in the ninth inning, man. Let's, let's, let's get this done, let's, let's figure it out. You're gonna have some challenges, talking to the teachers, I'm sure, when it comes to the, the, the recording issue, but maybe you guys, I, I'm, I'm confident you guys will be able to come to some kind of an agreement of what that looks like. And then once that is, the letter that Ms. Bergmeyer's pointing out to the parents of a solid, this is what we're doing, parents make your choice and we move forward.
Yeah, I, I agree. You know, like I said earlier, the water hurdle is, as far as getting the desk standardized and secondary, we are working. We're working on it.
So you've indicated you're comfortable with the October 5th starting?
Yes.
Are you doing the steady start?
Well, yeah, they have shot. Let's first get the motion done and then go to the.
Okay.
The things, yeah. Because I think we're gonna wanna talk about the start of the elementary, as we mentioned, things and what are we doing? So, there is a motion on the floor, if there is no more board comments, I'll, I'll wait here ten seconds in case there is, uh, and then we will move to a vote.
Can you clarify it loud and clear, please? Because there's been a lot of people talking at the same time, which is distracting, uh, via Zoom.
Ms. Middlestat?
So the motion is going phase, option one, face-to-face and virtual, with virtual specified as separate virtual class at the elementary K-5. And a sixth through twelfth grade, we would have a, what we call virtual live, similar to Richmond, where we have webcams and teacher, there's now a separate, um, virtual teacher classroom.
Thank you for the clarification.
So having said that, sir, Mr. Drew, you're so good, hold this tech on that. Yes. Anybody else, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one more thing. What, what is this gonna do? Uh, you know, some of the teachers have brought up some concerns about how much they're putting into the, the virtual with the uploading of documents, downloading of documents, that they're spending hours upon in setting this up. Just teaching virtual live, I mean, they're obviously not gonna have the film and put it in front mode like they were talking plans, but what are we gonna do to support them? Still seems like a whole lot of extra work and I'm gonna teach your goal, just, or is there anything we can do?
Yeah, and talking at the, uh, the secondary.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, you know, part of it was all over to reevaluate the early release time, but we talked about, you know, we have to look at how we give teachers more support in secondary, whether that, um, is, you know, having a math and a science, uh, you know, language arts person outside the classroom to give support. Um, that is something that we talked about, um, as administrators. I have thought about that with, uh, some of the staff also. So, yeah, we real, you know, we need to discuss that on how, you know, what's the support that we can do. I mean, no matter what you choose, there's gonna be, there's gonna be hurdles, no matter what we choose, but, um, we'll work together to, uh, you know, meet those challenges, so, you know, in some of the districts around us.
Any other proposals? Mr. Middlestat, please call the roll.
Ms. Bergmeyer.
Yeah.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Ms. Wood.
Yes.
Yes, you reckon any headshot?
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Ms. Middlestat, yeah.
Okay, motion carries. Um, it sounds like Mr. Middlestat would probably wanna have a conversation. Okay, motion carries, um, it sounds like Mr. Melostat would probably wanna have a conversation at this point about what this could look like.
So I would, I would maybe agree that, that October 5th, you do the K-1, 6th and 9th first for the first day, not that we're all eating longer, but we have the first day, because those are students' first time in the building, plus I think we gotta get, get a feel of parents drop off, or how this thing's gonna work, so, these kids will be new to the buildings theoretically, give us at least one day, I don't hate to drag it out any longer than that, so I would propose we start on October 5th. First day would be K-1, 6th to 9th grade is proposed by the administration, and then uh, everyone else doesn't find balance of the week. Second.
Any, any other comments about that, any concerns?
I only thought of, um, what about flipping kindergarten, making kindergarten come in last? Um, they're brand new to the building, to the district, yes, but, you know, they're not used to the protocol of how normal it was, so what if we activate our elementary students first, bring in kindergarten and last? Uh, you know, once we have it, so it's a little less chaotic for brand new kids who are already overgrown, probably coming back to school or to school for the first time. Um.
It'd be more overwhelming, I don't know, coming in with, I, I, with a, not a teacher, but with a bunch of kids in there and bringing kindergarteners in.
Oh, so that was a thought, that was just, Mr. Melostat's not agreeing.
Yeah. Correct.
So now they only got two grades.
No, it's a good question, but what we do is like now, suddenly that, you know, leg of the school year, you do bring you know, kindergarteners early, they're back, you know, the building, kindergarten bottomed up, so you do, this is, you know, about as close as what we've done in the past. You know, and I, I just wanna point out, the board, those are just examples, but the only difference between those two examples is everybody's in on Tuesday, or everybody's in on Wednesday. And the objective, the objective of it, again, there's no perfect answer, the objective of this on the slow start, if you're calling, is to get students acclimated to what the safety procedures and process that they have to take, you know, when they, you know, when they return, um, and also helps the staff um, with that also working with students. So we can do either one, but I just wanna point out, the only difference, um, um, all the students are back on Tuesday, um, if we did the uh, Tuesday, 2, 3, 7, 10, and then Wednesday, rest of the students, um, that would be everybody back on Wednesday.
I, I may be on an island, but I agree with the slow start. I think, I love there's enough new things going on with this school and enough new procedures that it's gonna be like a new day for every student, and you know, for them to, to work in, but, uh, I mean, I'm not obviously gonna get in the way, but I do believe the slow start's the way to go, I think you would give your teachers time, plus you have all those teachers in the building working with a smaller group of kids, they can all support kindergarten first, then the second and third, whereas by day two, you know, everybody's worried about throwing glass in that school, um, I think you just have more, more eyes and more ears and more hands at home, make sure the protocols are being followed on a slow start.
The three-day slow start versus two, does anybody here object to that, or the three-day slow start?
I think the parents, yeah. Parents will have, we have some kids sitting at home another day, that's still an issue, plus you're you're gonna cause some grief because some parents have been having first grader and a fourth grader, that's messed up anyway, but if we drag it out any further, it's gonna mess, I think, but that's my opinion, yes, I want to do a slow start too, but, you know, I have to consider that again, this issue with kids at home, kids at school, I don't wanna be late in that, longer than I have.
Yeah, and I'm fine with doing a two-day start, uh, Mr. Center shot, Mr. Witt, you.
Well, why don't you try bringing in K-2 and then 3-5? That's kinda middle ground, and get you all back by Tuesday. When you've got your lower L with a lot of additional staff from the upper L teachers that might be available, and then you've got your third, fourth and fifth coming in the second day.
The only issue there is you have everybody packed with the lower L wing, or somebody at the other wing.
I, I, I can't hear you, Steve.
My, my point, my point is that you'll have everybody packed in the lower L wing, nobody in the upper L wings can do that process, I do key.
So what are you suggesting then?
I made a motion, K-1, the ninth grade.
And then October 6th, hold on, all students. There was support for that.
So you only want K-1 in the building on the first day?
Yes.
And then sixth graders and ninth graders that are transitioning.
Yeah, right, because they didn't have that opportunity to visit the schools and all of that.
Yeah, and slightly we could do the kindergarteners, we pick up the kindergarteners, they could ride the bus, we could do that stuff, so uh, I, I, again, I would support, you know, the motion, so, um, Mr. Center shot, any comment?
I have, I have parents that are sending me messages saying that your microphones are very muffled, and I can agree with them, and they don't understand what is going on right now.
Hey, can we recap, or Mr. Green can, President Green recap?
You can try to recap.
The last hour, um, the, obviously, you're present for the vote, we're going back to face-to-face, virtual.
Right, they're talking about this, I think where there's a disconnect is they saw the first vote, and now they're trying to figure out what the second vote is, that's what the messages that have been sent to me. The problem is the, the side of the room that Mr. Daru and Mr. Melostat are on, there's something up with those microphones.
Oh. Well, uh, just the last piece is we're discussing, uh, a slow start, uh, rather than bringing back everybody on October 5th, we're discussing on October 5th, the kindergarten first grade, sixth grade and ninth grade of the power, and then all other students in the district would report on Tuesday, October 6th, and that would allow our students who are transitioning or new to get into their building before the building is full of, of students. Uh, I've been in the buildings, they're, they're all taped off hallways, there's plexiglass in places that, you know, are already in place, uh, and again, the center shot, the thought process there is to get them into the building, get them activated for a day before we even throw the rest of the students in, um, my Davey guys.
All right, and some other questions that have been sent to me in the chat is, they're asking specifically for elementary, if K-5, uh, they were unclear when Mr. Woodside was talking, because again, it seems like the microphones on the two outside walls are difficult to hear. Um, they didn't hear, I do believe the masks are required, K-5, correct?
I believe as part of this, the mask can be required, K-12.
So they were just asking elementary-wise, so the elementary building has now been rolled into the mask mandate?
We can, uh, we can certainly, we will discuss that piece again, uh.
Okay.
We wanna go through these items, I know it's difficult because you're remote, but we wanna go through these items one by one and, and bring them out and talk through them, so we will add that to our list, but I believe that is what's gonna be the recommendation.
Okay, that was a, people are just sending, because I'm sitting here watching the chatroom, they're sending me questions, so I just wanna make sure all of their concerns uh, are getting so that you guys see them as quickly as I do here.
Of course, uh, do you have anything else, ma'am?
You all have completely exhausted any questions that I have had.
Very well. All right. Okay, so, uh, backup, for those of you that are watching virtually, uh, we're gonna have the slide here in just a second, and it's gonna discuss um, what a slow start would be, and I believe we're looking at the bottom one, correct, thank you, sir, um, the bottom, slow return start, elementary, middle school and high school. Again, by October 6th, everybody's in the building. So there was a motion on the floor by Mr. Melostat, supported by Mr. Drew again. Uh, Mr. Melostat, if you could call the vote on this specific issue of the slow start beginning on October 5th.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Witt.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Ben Hendershot?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Melostat, yes.
Okay, motion carries, moving on to the next topic that I think we probably should discuss, masks in elementary school.
Yeah, um.
Do you wanna motion, do you wanna start motioning these and locking them in, or we just wanna have discussions?
Well, I would just like to add that, uh, partly, you know, we already are requiring the secondary to wear a mask, um, and we did discuss the idea, we started out asking the elementary to wear a mask, but yes, um, we are asking the elementary, we should change our plan, that K, that K-12 would be wearing a mask. I wanted to add to that, also, if a student does not wear a mask, doesn't have a medical reason why, um, we would address that issue by asking if they wear a mask, if they don't, um, we're going to ask that the parents.
So do you wanna make a motion to give the superintendent the authority to do this?
Yes, no?
Any takers?
Yeah.
How do you make the motion? Okay, which motion, sir?
Let him have the authority to.
K, K through 12 masks, and follow the protocol he specified, if they don't have one on. I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Drew, Mr. Melostat. Are there any questions? I wanna vote?
Oh, you wanna vote?
Yes, sir.
Boy, Mr. Burke Meyer.
No.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Witt.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Ben Hendershot?
Yes.
Mr. Daru.
Yes.
Mr. Melostat, yes.
Motion carries, what other topics do we have that we wanna cover tonight concerning October 5th start?
Well, I do wanna add that, um, part of the reason for the mask is we know, and, and this has been the case, I think we've all seen on the news, those districts that are face-to-face, know, um, you know, I've been on the news for the social distancing part of it, and that's part of the reason of the governor's plan that, you know, asking students to wear masks, because we know that's gonna be a challenge in the classroom, in the hallways and in the cafeterias, we're gonna take all the precautions we can, but social distancing face-to-face is not a requirement of the governor's plan. Um, so that's why we're asking, you know, K-12 to, to wear a mask, we know the current plan is the secondary um, to wearing a mask, but as Mrs. Burke Meyer said earlier, we will put out to the community, what is virtual, the challenges, the positives, negative, and face-to-face, what are the challenges, the positives, negative, and this gives the families, uh, in our district to, uh, make that choice.
When do you anticipate that we have something like that? And we can post it probably on our website, and see how the parents could look at it at their leisure.
Yeah.
When are you thinking so that we give our parents as much time as possible?
Oh, we'll put the communication out tomorrow.
Okay.
One, two, three.
Very good.
Okay, anyone bring, can we clarify mask, with the mask-based covering, you know?
Yes.
So people know that.
We'll use common sense, I mean, we're not gonna.
I know, but.
It's about safety, I don't wanna get into the debate whether we should wear a mask, should wear a mask, I don't wanna, you know, you know, we have students in our building, and those that are face-to-face are required to use a mask, um, you know, for, you know, for students, if there's a medical reason why, and of course, we will use common sense to work with all students, um, but obviously, there's been tribes that wouldn't wear one, you know, working with the students so they would understand, you know, if the peers, um, to wear one, uh, and that is.
I think it's the, again, it's responsible thing to do, we're trying to do everything we can to get the kids back to the schools, get them back to school. There is concerns out there, one way or another, there might be some that think, you know, it's not as uh, risky as others, but again, if they got a medical condition, I, I don't expect we're gonna be getting into big wars out there with them, and obviously, when you're talking about low, the lower grades, obviously, we're gonna work with those kids, but, I mean, it, it's, it's just something that we're all doing it out in public, and we go to most places, people are doing it, it's I, you know, I, I don't, it shouldn't be like a negative thing that we made this motion, and it, I don't wanna see this big, oh, well, they gave the superintendent the rights to just throw kids out of school, and let this turn into a political thing, this is just a we understand, well, I understand, and that's what it is, yeah, it's just, we are trying to be responsible, we're doing everything we can to get the kids back in school, let's do it in the best way.
But I just wanna, yeah, clarify that, are, are we gonna be okay with face covering, they've come up with one of the banana slip covers they cover, just because we have issues with that in sports and everything else, if that's an acceptable mask, I'd just like to see that in writing of what they're allowed.
Yeah, I, I, uh, the districts that are face-to-face, um, said far, far majority, ninety-plus percent, they have their own face mask, and we did go out and buy a lot of face masks, anticipating that, hey, you know, you have to wear them, you'll have plenty of masks in all the buildings, but, um, you know, kids have kinda made it part of their, work, their work role, uh, in talking to those other students that, you know, kids are face-to-face. It's a pretty creative.
They're having fun with it.
Pretty creative mask, but yeah, my, yeah, we, we will use common sense, and just put it as a face covering.
Anything else, sir? Anybody have anything else before we move on? Okay, I think we're probably ready to move on from this issue, um, continuing on down the agenda to general business. Um, that brings us to personnel, and Ms. Gonzalez, I guess, right?
Yes. Yes.
Good evening, um, you have before you tonight the recommendation to hire Jessica Raccosta as a kindergarten teacher at Sugar Bush Elementary, she would be replacing the retirement of Wanda Knappick. Um, Jessica attended Saginaw Valley, she did her student teaching in a, in a kindergarten classroom as well as a, um, special ed, she did two, um, student teaching assignments, as she is a, um, special ed, um, endorsed teacher as well.
Your motion, so, hire the teacher. Motion by Melostat, I'll second, supported by Moses, hold the vote, sir?
Burke Meyer.
Yes.
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 Drew.
Yes.
Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Ben Hendershot?
Yes.
Melostat, yes. All right, motion carries, moving on, item B, is it also gonna fall to Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes. Yeah, so, tonight is the, um, second reading of the attendance and truancy policy. Um, you have that, uh, that was provided to you, and, um, if you approve, we just need a vote.
Well, I hate to be, make another change, too, but at the end of it, it says, during the manner, should be that. During the matter, rather than child protective services, just strike that, just saying, during the matter, two of the appropriate agents. Just take the protective service. Cause you said last meeting, they don't, they don't do masks.
So we're gonna strike the CPS part of that, uh, do I hear a motion?
I'm voting for the policy of.
As amended?
As amended, thank you.
Very good, sir, I'll second, Mr. Moses, I wanna vote, sir?
Mr. Burke Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Ben Hendershot?
Yes.
Drew?
Yeah.
Mr. Melostat, yes.
I, I do wanna circle back, um, we just made a hire, and I didn't even welcome her to the district, is Jessica on the, uh, the Zoom today?
I didn't see her on, no, I, I don't, I don't see her.
Okay, for both of us, welcome aboard, anything?
Thank you.
Just have to watch, uh, two and a half hours of video to get to her class. Um, all right, let's see, moving on, looks like we're gonna move on to the table, I believe that'll be Robin. This Randy doesn't worry about them. Hello, caller, are you there? The top shows.
Can you be unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are, we can hear you.
Here we go, thank you, I was waiting to be unmuted. So, um, the, the board has been presented with the bill's payable summary and detail for the month of August. The bill's payable reports to the board include a summary sheet detailing the expenditures by fund and the supporting detailed check register for those expenditures for the month. The August expenditures totaled $3.3 million. If the board has any questions, I would be happy to answer those questions at this. If the board has any questions, I would be happy to answer those questions at this time.
Motion, any, anybody any questions before I take the motion, sir? Hearing none, by the room, second, supported by Middlestat. A vote, sir? Mr. Burke Meyer?
Yeah.
Moses?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Academy of the Anderson?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Middlestat, yes. All right, moving down the agendas and union communications. Um, first, I owe an apology to some of our other union folks that were on the call last week, and I did not call you for communication. So, uh, please get your, your hands up if you're on the call and you wish to speak. Uh, I know that Ms. Petron, uh, does wish to speak and perhaps, uh, anyone else, uh, in terms of union leadership. That may be on the call, get your hand up, and I will come on Mr. Sizemore and help us out with that. So if we could, let's go to Ms. Petron first, sir.
Okay, um, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so first of all, I want to make very clear that live streaming video cameras in the classroom is a change of our terms and conditions of employment. I have had several meetings with administration over the summer, and I have made this very clear that this is something that we will not agree to. I am not sure why your curriculum directors and your assistant superintendent and your director of technology did not relay that message to the school board. Uh, obviously, again, communication is lacking in this district. Furthermore, based on our own legal advice from our attorneys, with a wide array of, uh, potential issues with privacy for, for, etc. This is not something we are going to agree to. And once again, the lack of communication, respect for our staff, our contract, and the terms of our contract is, is ridiculous. That's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Petron. Uh, Mr. Sizemore, you have anybody else that's got their hand up for us? Not for union, there is one other lady, Amanda Plague. Uh, we probably want to save her for a little bit forum, which is coming up soon. Uh, I don't think Amanda's one of our union leadership. No, I said, I don't think anyone in the union has their hand up. Okay.
You have Cal, you have Colleen Prokop, I don't know if she's union or not.
She's union.
Leadership.
She's a teacher, yes.
So she's not leadership.
Yeah, okay, why don't we push her to open forum if we could and stick to our union leadership for union communications? And that'll still get her a box in the top. So, no one else? We will move down the agenda to planning for the future and an award recommendation, uh, as this man, Randazzo, as well, or Mr. Case?
This is Mr. Case, and what, what you have here is the protective areas, yes. Um, and, and.
We can't hear you.
Thanks, Maureen.
I'm sorry.
Um. The, what we have before the board is a recommendation to get desk shields and protective barriers, as Mr. Case has done. Bids on that, and Mr. Case, are you, are you on this call? Do you, you can see there, maybe.
Yeah, I'm here, Mr. Woodside.
We can hear you, Mr. Case, go ahead.
Uh, yes, in your board pack is an award recommendation for desk shields and protective barriers. These products will be used to create barriers between students, teachers, and other staff members in classrooms and offices. Uh, the award recommendation is to purchase these products from three companies, uh, Woodson Group, Polymer Shapes, and L-Link. The total amount of the purchase is one hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars, and we did receive thirty-two bids for this RFP.
All right, uh, does the board have any questions before we move to a vote? I'm going to be true to this presentation. Motion by Middlestat? Clear support.
A second.
Support by the Wood. Uh, is there any questions before we move to a vote?
So these are, these are for K twelve?
Yes.
Barrier, okay. Um, I know, like in kindergarten, they have more tables, not individual desks. So I'm assuming it's modified based on those options.
Yes, they're going, the K, uh, eight option is a tri-fold barrier for each student.
Okay, so you're like encapsulating the student.
I couldn't hear you, uh, Ms. Burke Meyer.
Like encapsulating each student.
Correct.
I like those five and five years, those are good words.
Yes.
Yes.
Any additional questions? Mr. Middlestat, would you follow a roll, please? Mr. Burke Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Academy of the Anderson?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, moving on to the second open forum of tonight's meeting, and I think we will start with this Prokop.
Uh, she did not raise her hand.
She did not?
Not, you know, I don't know if she's going to speak, but she did not.
This Prokop, are you still with us and wish to address the board?
She is, she's waving a physical hand, she has not put her hand up in the box. She needs to go down and hit reactions.
I can unmute her.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, just a reaction to the mask wearing of K through twelve. Um, back at the end of August, the governor, um, and Dr. Caldoon did ask and said it was their hope. That every superintendent would in fact mandate the wearing of masks, K twelve, to help mitigate the spread of the virus. Uh, Dr., uh, I'm sorry, it was not Dr. Caldoon, Governor Whitmer also said. That the refusal to wear masks is simply a cultural thing that we have to get over in order to help mitigate the spread of the virus. She said throughout the world, children everywhere who are going back to school are wearing masks back to school. So I am glad that you, uh, have allowed our superintendent to make this decision. And I hope that this will be, um, something that will be kept in our return to school, um, throughout face to face instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Sizemore, anyone else have their hand up? Amanda Plague? Amanda Plague?
I'm here.
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, I have two questions. Um, my first question is, you approved the face to face time. Did you approve additional prep time for the teachers or are we beginning full day instruction?
So I, I believe the motion was for full day instruction at L and secondary level.
Okay, so then my question would be, why are you asking the teachers to do two jobs? I am a member of the community, my children go to lighthouse, I am also a teacher in another district. I don't understand why you cannot designate teachers to be virtual teachers and have the teachers in the classroom focus on the students in the classroom. First of all, this violates students' privacy, including FERPA. I am a teacher consultant in another district, special education students have rights, general education students have rights. And I personally do not feel comfortable having my child on a camera. Second of all, have you at all thought about the time that it will take for the teacher to load all of the virtual work onto Schoology? In addition to face and face instruction, you're asking them to do two jobs. I don't think that's right for our educators. They need to be able to focus as professionals on the children in the classroom. In addition to focus on their students who are home trying to learn. Have you come up with a plan for that? I appreciate that you voted yes for face to face. However, the impulsive decisions of the board are not being thought out with process and procedure as to how these things are going to be implemented. I would like to know how you're going to implement this.
So, in reference to the elementary, I believe the decision was, was to segregate the, uh, face to face from the virtual students. Uh, I, I think I addressed it a little early and talked to the concern and the superintendent addressed what the negatives may be. That students that have been in class virtually now, um, may shift teachers or have a different teacher as we're splitting up, um, our elementary. Uh, we're addressing the, the secondary piece. Um, certainly, I understand your concerns about having a camera in the class. Um, however, I think the board voted unanimously to, to support that in the secondary level. Um, pending, I was trying to work out the details with our, our teachers. Uh, and certainly, you know, the virtual option is always available to everybody who's not comfortable with anything that the, the district is implementing in terms of cameras or safety or splitting the virtual and the, um, face to face students. So anything else, do I have a superintendent?
No, I think we've set it well, I think that.
We just released a new concept called darkness.
I think it's set up. I'll be added one, we're going to look at the idea as, um, as Mr. Burke Meyer asked, looking at shortening, um, that release time or early release, if it's out a little later.
I guess, the way I would explain it is, you know, the, the slide that went up there for elementary, for example. You know, your start time is going to be normal, and then I would minimally, at this point, I would minimally plan, you know. Your day is at least is going to be somewhere, you know, maybe shorter than the normal day up to, but not more than the two hours that you already presented. But that might be less.
You know, working the specials.
By working specials in, if that's able to happen, we might put some time back into the day. But I guess as a parent, I would say, plan on, you know, as a, you know, as a hard stop, I would plan on, you know, two hours shorter dismissal at the post. Um, but we're hoping to find a way to integrate the specials back in and lessen that amount.
All right, uh, Mr. Sizemore? Angela, Angela? I, and we're looking for Angela, I don't think it's your first and last name, that would be great. I'm not hearing anyone. You've unmuted.
Angela?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, if you could give us your name, that would be great.
Hi, can you?
I break in the class. Uh, Mr. Sizemore, we'll move on to the next one, we'll circle back to her last, she's just traveling into the dead zone or call. Renee Baker? Renee Baker?
Yes, good evening.
Evening.
So, um, first of all, I want to thank you for the follow-up from the last meeting, I did get a call back, so I appreciate that from you guys. Um, I actually just had comments, um, and they kind of go to Ms. Petron. So, in her first statement, she wants to go face to face, but now she's, they're, they don't want to because of the cameras in the classroom. But, and then we had parents complaining about saying the FERPA and everything else. But I'm not sure, are they aware that the kids are on camera right now and everybody can see them? I think face to face is the best option, what you guys are going for has been great for tonight. And, but you can't have it both ways, you can't want, can't be in the classroom and don't want to be virtual at the same time, uh, by the teachers. So there needs to be some common ground here, um, but she can't, she can't want to go back an hour ago and now she, nope, I'm not doing it because of, um, the cameras in the classroom. So I understand there's contracts and everything, but I think amendments could be made in this time, this unruly time that we are in, um, to get these kids back to school. And we can get them, uh, back to face to face, and we can, uh, go look back at the next board meeting and say, oh, okay, well, let's tweak this some more. So, um, I think we, we can't have it both ways. She, they just can't, it's got to be one way or the other temporarily, and then we can move on from there and make other decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to try Angela again. One more try for Angela.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, may we have your first and last name, please?
Yeah, my, my first name is Angela and my last name is Jaro. Um, I just, I'm, I just want to thank you for voting for the face to face instruction. And, uh, um, my only question is, what is the, is it, I, cause the audio was cutting out, I had messaged a few members of the board. Um, I'm trying, but what exactly did you guys vote on, like for face to face, it's this, uh, slow return that I was, I really wasn't understanding.
Your, your question is specifically when and how we're returning face to face? Or, or what was the vote? I think, I think we lost very good. So, um, I have my notes written down here, the, the plan at this point, and the board has voted, uh, to bring back face to face instruction beginning October fifth. Um, and as superintendent uses the slow roll is our plan. Um, I believe we decided that during K one, Monday, sixth and ninth graders on Monday. And then the rest of the students would be returning, uh, on Tuesday, is that correct? Uh, my notes from the motion, we're going to slide earlier. Um, just to recap for everybody, um, that's, that's what the plan is, October fifth, uh, K through one or two, what do we decide? Oh, boy. K through one or K through two? K one, right, K one.
K one.
K one, sixth and ninth come back, everyone else comes back on Tuesday. Uh, Dick Young Five comes in on Monday. Correct. Um. I heard this one's clear as much as it is for me too, because it's all for.
No, you were right, Duck Five's first grade is coming in on Monday, sixth, grade nine.
Okay, all right, I got it. Um, and then additionally, superintendent did comment that we will have, uh, some additional information available on the district website, uh, tomorrow. Mr. Sizemore, who's next, sir?
Ashley Parrott?
Ashley Parrott?
Parrott.
Parrott. Ashley Parrott, you can give us your name, please, that would be great.
Hi, yes, my name is Sarah Kilchewski, and I am the parent of an Ashley Elementary School student. So just to clarify, today is the twenty-third, there are seven business days before October fifth. I should expect to be contacted very soon. Um, the district is going to identify all students who wish to remain virtual. Uh, we are a family that wishes to remain virtual, and I would expect that by October fifth, I would have a new classroom assigned to my student who will remain virtual. He will have a new classroom full of friends, and it, the process will kind of start over anew, possibly with a new teacher, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank.
Possible you may have new teachers, possibly you may not, depending on how they did young. But yes, the students that remain virtual will all be, um, assigned to one virtual class.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, thank you very much.
Sure. Mr. Sizemore, anything else?
Amy Tarnacki?
Amy Tarnacki?
Good evening, board, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I wasn't originally planning to speak tonight, but two things that came up made me, um, want to speak and changed my mind. First, on behalf of myself and the other seventeen elementary specialists, I would like to thank the board members who spoke such high praise about the elementary specials program. Um, it touches my teacher heart to know that we as a teaching staff are appreciated by our board members. The second thing I would like to bring up is, one of the reasons why early release is an option for the elementary. Is to keep elementary specials virtual, so that one or more of the elementary specials, specialists who are already stretched thin, we are teaching between six hundred and eight hundred students apiece. So that one or more of those teachers can be reassigned as the elementary virtual teachers. Thus making the remaining elementary specialists be stretched even further, having to service more anchor-based students. And then giving those students, um, what I would consider a lesser quality education in elementary specials. Which is a disservice to our anchor bay community. So I want you to keep that, um, in your mind as you make a decision about how we are, um, teaching these elementary students who are remaining virtual. Um, I thank you for your time as always, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tarnacki. Thank you, Ms. Tarnacki. Mr. Sizemore?
Jessica Elliott?
Jessica Elliott.
Yes, do you guys know, um, or would it be based with the Early Childhood Center? We have a son that's enrolled in the four-year-old preschool. So, are they going to fall under this back-to-school protocol also, or is that different? And that'll be handled through Early Child Center? Like, my son attends Neldret for four-year-old preschool three days a week, but they haven't started due to everything. So, just kind of wondering if that's-
Yeah.
Or-
Our intentions are four-year-old program to start. Um, and I can have, uh, Mr. Wedge get back to Jessica Elliott.
Okay.
In regards to that, yes, the four-year-old program starts, and start all of it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Smith?
Good evening. Good evening, can you hear me?
I can, sir.
My name is Drew Smith. I'm a parent. Um, my child goes to some const-, uh, I've already spoken one, once tonight, but I wanted to thank you for, let me jump on again real quick. Just not to get involved with, with the union and, and everything that comes with that, but I just wanted to encourage you guys that, as a board, please keep in mind what the parents want. Um, we do want our kids face-to-face, and I, and I understand that it's, um, it, it may be a new concept, or it, it may be tough to get, uh, to get our teachers to, to do, what some people are claiming to be two different jobs. Um, at the same time, I, again, I, I disagree with that, that train of thought. I think that it's just a different, um, uh, a mode of, um, communication. I, I mean, yes, they might have to load extra things in the school G, but at the same time, all you're doing is receiving the information in a different format. Um, you know, you have some kids that are going to do it in class, and you have some kids that are going to submit it to you via, you know, either a text message or dojo, or whatever that platform ends up being. But I encourage you guys to not back down with what parents are asking you to do. Um, when it comes to what sounds like the union is going to be, um, fighting against, uh, being able to put the live stream in the classes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, just Deb, there's no last name.
Uh, is there a Deb out there?
Yes, hi, I'm Debbie Hunter, and I'm a teacher in Anchor Bay. Um, I'm like all over the place right now. I was called on earlier about my grandchildren, uh, were walking in because they're with me because they, their mother works tomorrow, so they're staying with me. Um, so I'm going to try to get my thoughts together. Um, first of all, um, I want to thank the board for, it sounds like we are going to have two different teachers. One for, it's in the elementary level, a teacher that teaches in the classroom face-to-face, and a teacher that teaches virtually. The reason that I think that's awesome is because behind the scenes, no one really sees what we are doing. Right now, we do work nights. We do work weekends. Why? Because we do care about our students, and we do love our students. Those are our virtual students. I'm a big advocate for them, and when I'm saying this, I am a huge advocate for those virtual students. At the same time, I want to go face-to-face. But I do respect those families for whatever reasons that they want to keep their children home. Now, for those virtual students, there is no possible way that we can give them 100, the 100% that they deserve, doing both virtual and face-to-face as one teacher. It's just not possible. I mean, it isn't, and we can say that it is. It is not. There's no way, because we, I mean, we don't have enough hours in the day to do it. And the reason that I'm saying that is because we are passionate about our job. We do love our children. We are data-driven, we're heart-driven, and at the end of the day, we want to give them the best. We are an advocate for all children within our district. We work for our students, and we work for the community, and we work for families. We do not settle for second best. As far as virtual streaming, that does sound awesome. It does, but at the same time, I mean, I, I know that when you look at virtual streaming, I know I only have so many minutes, but I, I need to get this off my chest too. At an elementary level, when you are, when you have a small, when you have a group of kids on that computer and you're more face-to-face, it is difficult sometime to get them engaged. But if you have them virtual streaming, it's going to be the same as, okay, who wants to go to the zoo? Or who wants to go to a virtual live and watch the zoo, the animals online? You can't keep a child engaged there, but you can at the zoo. I know that's probably not the best analogy, but it's a fact. Virtual streaming into the classroom, we're going to lose those students that are sitting at home in elementary, watching a camera where a teacher is moving around the room, engaged. They cannot see, you know, they can't see the board, they can't see the number corner, and they can't see what's going on. So, I am, I am thrilled that we're going to have a separate teacher, um, for virtual students, because I think it's in their very best interest. It's, it's not even about what a teacher wants. It's about what's in the best interest of the child. And my mind's all over the place, but I just wanted to say that real quick. I have other things, but I'll wait. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Amanda Stewart?
Is Amanda Stewart with us?
Yes, I'm here. Um, yes, this is Amanda Stewart. I do want to thank Mr. Woodside, um, after last week's meeting for reaching out to me, as well as Mr. Cusmano, to come up with some type of, um, plan for maybe some of these kids that cannot, uh, navigate Schoology as well. I, I appreciated that, not as, only, um, to further that, that I was reached out by Ms. Mayfield, and she offered some services for him to come back in on Friday for help, because with that guidance and with that, um, help with Schoology, he was able to catch on, up on some missing assignments that he did not see or did not realize that needed to be submitted. I do want to encourage the teachers, as well as parents, that with any change is going to, there are going to be some kinks in this. This is new to all of us. We have all been driven, and we've all put in our extra time. We're all working 24/7 to not only help the students, but to help our children. My husband and I have gone, you know, are working full-time. We're putting in time until 11 o'clock to help get assignments done, print out the lesson plans for the next day. There's going to be kinks in the system when we first begin. And it's going to be frustrating. But I've had a son on the spectrum that I have worked 24/7 to get him where he needs to be. And with change has come a lot of different hurdles. But getting him through the first grade, when we switched him schools from kindergarten to first, and then again, go, sending him to middle school. There has been kinks, and we have had a lot of resources along the way that has helped us. And I know that I was frustrated last week, but with that frustration, came and me speaking out and maybe helping some other parents, came some results, and we got some results just in a week. We have two weeks till school starts, and I do want to encourage parents and teachers, yes, we're going to have some kinks. Yes, there's going to be kinks between the virtual and maybe some webcams and secondary, but they'll get figured out. And if you have a concern or a question, as I was told this week, reach out individually to not only your principal, but take the next step up to your superintendent, because I did get some help just by speaking out, and yes, I had some frustrations, but thank you for listening to me last week. I really, really appreciated that.
Well, thank you for that. I'm glad that, um, you're able to work through the challenges that you're having, and you've got the attention needed, so I'm glad for that as well. All right, that's it. We're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Uh, Mr., uh, hang on, that's not it. I have one parent that I don't believe has the ability for audio. She sent me three questions that she liked to ask. Her name is Leslie. Um, she, two of the question-
You have to have her last name.
Nope, she just identified herself as Leslie. I, I don't know the rest of them. Um, two of the questions are for, um, Mr. Chase. Um, can you tell us, Andy, if, um, the trifold barriers will be transparent? I assume they will be. And if they will be here by October 5th?
I know that we, I know that we talked about that on these orders. And I know that the, like, the desktop barriers, we have those. We're going to have those in time. We do have some of the trifles for the desk, but we're still waiting on, um, quite a few more. So, we're in the same boat as other districts that are using them. So, we're still working on, um, to have those in. Um, because we had talked about, you know, all the things, I mean, across the, you know, technology stuff, and what are all the things that, um, we'll have in place by October 5th? And what are the things that we're going to be waiting on, or possibly waiting on? And I believe the, the trifold desktops, um, was one, one of them that was a possibility. We do have a lot of them, but we don't have the far majority in the order.
Okay, and her last question was, she liked clarification on the starting end times for the elementary. I, from, by, by understanding correctly, that's still a work in progress?
Yeah, as we, as we, you know, from what the board input gave us today, we're going to, um, work on those recommendations and how close we can get to them. And then, as soon as we have that, that we will get it out. But we are going to put out as much information explaining the virtual and face-to-face tomorrow for all the parents, so we'll have that tomorrow. And, um, the end time for school, we have a good idea, but, um, we don't have the exact time right now. We're going to work on that and how we can address, uh, the board's input.
Okay, I do have one question from a teacher who would like to know, um, if we do end up shortening the elementary school day, we will still be providing SAC for the full time, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yes, I don't see any reason why, why we're not.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure they, they got their questions out, because they weren't able to, to speak during, you know, the audio time, so.
Um, could we have one other clarification? Will, because of possibilities that students would, if we have to quarantine, would move back to doing, uh, online? Um, are we, and if we have to have specials at the end of the day and do that virtually, then I would assume that all of the devices would remain in the home, or is that not correct?
Yeah, we're, we've talked about that, and that's our intention is, you know, for the students to have, you know, for the devices. And as I said earlier, I believe we're about 150 devices per family short, and you're hoping to get those in before the start of the school year. I asked Anita, and I forgot what she had said, that they would be here before the start of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, it's, it's our intention to leave the devices in home. Uh, because we're all very pragmatic and realistic, and understand that we may, at the moment's notice, for some reason, if we're moved back to phase three by the governor, or we've worked to sustain a large outbreak, which isn't anticipated, we can, if you will, flip the switch and go back to virtual. Um, and it'd be a lot more seamless than last March was, and it'll be a lot more seamless than chasing now. Um, internet access and computers. Our plan is to leave those computers, um, where they are, and let them back, uh, probably not until the end of the school year. So, with that, uh, if there is nothing else, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, special meeting of, August 5th, 2020, and the August 11th, 2020 meeting, and the financial report as presented. So, move. Motion by Drew.
A second.
Support by Mr. Webb. Mr. Middlestaff, if you can call the vote, please. Ms. Brookmeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Moses?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Heather Shaw?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Let's take it. All right, motion carries. Uh, next on the agenda, uh, should we see fit? Superintendent comments?
Yeah, we, I'll be agree. I know that last week, we started out with a lot of our athletic programs. It's good to see, you know, those students, you know, athletic students out keeping busy. I know the band is keeping busy. So, that was great to see. Um, we're excited about planning for the start of the school year, October 5th. Um, you know, like I said, I'm fancy enough to have information, you know, out there. And there's a lot of concerns, you know, from everybody as far as, you know, the virtual and going face-to-face. And I think everybody's concerns are legitimate. Um, you know, we do, you know, we're in the people business. Our, our main objective is creating the best learning environment possible for our students. Um, and we're all dedicated to that, you know, with administration, all support staff, all of our teachers. Nothing replaces a teacher in classroom. You know, we're going to do a great job with virtual, and we continue to move forward. But, um, one thing I've learned, uh, with this, I, I've always felt that way. Um, you know, having the teacher in the classroom, students in the classroom, nothing, nothing replaces that. Uh, making, you know, making those connections. And I, you know, I know some of the parents have given comments about, um, you know, the concerns raised by the union. Um, and we're going to work together on that. I know that, uh, that's the role. That's the role of the, you know, the union president, is to trust the concerns of, of the members that they represent. Um, and that goes along, like I first said, everybody's concerns are legitimate. Um, you know, they all have, um, good ideas, and, you know, we want to work together, because we work together and prepare for the start of the school year, and how are we going to do it virtually? And address some of the, uh, concerns that the board had, and how are we going to do, you know, secondary? And they're not, they're not separated. Uh, they have to do, um, you know, same classroom teacher does virtual, um, and classroom instruction. And what are we going to do to give them support? Um, so we're going to work together on that. Um, and we're going to work together, because we know that is going to guarantee the best outcome for our students and, and the return of our students. So, um, we'll get the information out. We're going to reach out to different groups. We're going to work together, so we are ready to go October 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to board comments. Uh, why don't we start with our, our virtual folks? Uh, Ms. Heather Shaw, if you were in mind, you have the mic.
Actually, I'm going to take this time that normally is dedicated to myself, to a few participants who, um, did not get an opportunity to ask a few things, as I sit and continue to read through the chatroom. I, some, um, questions have come up about will furlongs, uh, furloughed staff be back by October 5th? Does anybody know that answer?
Uh, yeah, I think HR will, will put out information on that, and the staff that we need obviously to start the school year, um, will be bringing them back.
And, um, some families want to know if there will be lunches served in the classroom. I'm assuming she's referring to the elementary levels.
Lunches, I think, we were- Yeah, that was part of the try to reduce, you know, try to reduce, um, students moving around in the building.
So, I have Terry, Terry.
You're correct. Yeah, we're, we're still having lunches in the classroom.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm going to give my last few seconds to, um, somebody who has been patiently raising their hand. They said they've messaged Mr. Sizemore and haven't been able to connect with him. Jackie Prevost? Can you let her talk for a moment? And Gretchen Pilon. Both of them said that they tried during, um, our open forum and could not get their hands noticed. I gladly will give my few moments to our community members.
Jackie's unmuted.
So, we're looking for Jackie. You've unmuted Jackie.
Yep, she unmuted herself.
Who was the other one, Ms. Heather Shaw?
The other one was Gretchen Hyland.
It's Pilon.
Pilon, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Hi.
Hi, my name is Gretchen Pealan and I teach at Middle School South. And I am in my second year of working with the MISD. It was formerly called Macomb 2020. It is now called MAID and it specializes in teachers how to teach a blended learning classroom, which has really come in handy for this remote learning time. I also served on the Virtual Learning Committee. And I wanted to give a little bit of insight. When the board was discussing live cameras, this is union contract aside. I'm really just thinking of the logistics of it because that's what my background is. The question was, well, what makes us different? All the other districts around us are doing it. And here's a few things that make us different. One is that these other districts are one-to-one. That means that their students are bringing devices into the classroom. It also means that their buildings have wifi. Our middle schools do not have wifi, so we can't even have students bring in devices. And this is where it becomes that, that phrase that we've been hearing, two jobs at the same time. It feels like two jobs at the same time because I am uploading content for my remote or virtual learners. But then I'm going to have face-to-face students who can't do the remote thing. And then I have to plan, what am I going to do with my face-to-face kids with what my virtual students are doing? And that's why you are hearing the phrase, two jobs at the same time. Now, are there some things I could change? Like I teach science. Sure, maybe I do a demo instead of letting them do hands-on things. That way, everybody sees it. But we bought this really cool science curriculum that has these great interactivities that teach students and reinforce ideas. My face-to-face students won't have that opportunity. I agree with what our superintendent said and the board said in this decision that the devices stay with the families because we may very well find ourselves in a remote situation again or temporarily quarantined. I'm not asking to pull those devices from families, but that means we don't even have laptop carts in our classroom to even try to every now and then be able to do the same thing. Or when it comes time to share out, there are a lot of great virtual ways to do that. Padlets, poplets, lino. But then there's this disconnect between the in-student, face-to-face students and the remote students. Thank you for letting me speak during this time. I just wanted to provide clarity to the board and to parents as to why teachers are saying that it feels like two jobs at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you still searching for one more? Amanda, is it her?
Yes, you never.
Jackie keeps raising her hand, but Jackie, when you talk, we can't hear you. So something is on your end. Tim already unmuted her.
If she's wearing, if she's wearing earphones, sometimes I have to take them out.
She's not. I can see her. I see her. No earphones. She keeps talking and we still can't hear her. So Jackie, you might need to just put your comments in the chat and we'll make sure the board receives them. She said thumbs up.
Okay, thank you for the interpretation. Mr. Witt?
Well, I'd just like to voice that this has been a very hard decision to make because in my heart, I know we need to get our kids back into school. But I also know that as much as we have procedures and policies in place to help keep them safe, that we are living in a very troubled time and there are no good options here. I feel that the boards made the right decision in the choice option and I would like to thank central administration for all the work they put into trying to meet all the needs of so many in so many different directions. And as the one parent said, that it's not going to go smoothly all the time and we need to be understanding and we need to adapt and we need to continue to get input from those who are working in situations that need to be addressed and so I just want to thank for one, all of the teachers that did email me and gave me a lot of really affirmation for things that I knew had to happen here tonight, but I just want to wish them all good luck. This is going to be a new adventure and I, for those that are choosing face-to-face, I'm very happy that we have that option available. I know that it's taken a tremendous amount to get enough laptops to try to get one per family in the home and that teachers now don't have the availability to do some of those things as Ms. Pealan had said. So again, we have to juggle a lot of, of different things here, but I feel very positive about starting and I feel that with the cooperation of the staff and the leadership and the parents that we can be really successful. So I just want to wish all of you a very good send-off into face-to-face and hope that the virtual having at elementary assigned specific teachers is going to be more beneficial for those little ones who've had a major issue being completely online while the rest of the class was face-to-face. So, thank you.
Bring it back in house. Go over to Mr. Middlestaff.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say that at least the teachers, the only daughters been involved with, have done a very good job with the virtual handling the virtual classroom stuff. It seems fairly straightforward after, after we saw pretty impressive then. It's unfortunate that the decision would, or we are not having the same teachers, maybe in yourself. Just wanted to acknowledge that. Also, as board members, we look at other districts that to many people, it's kind of all a simplification. They can do it, I can't do it. And sometimes. No, but I think my experience, at least with this district, is we do look at other districts and not just say, we'll do it like they do, but we make adjustments and they think better than what they do. So we just don't want to copy what they do. We want to do, take their model and make it better. And again, this takes cooperation all the way around and somehow leadership at those districts like Romeo, Richmond, or Maids tend to work things out and I'm quite sure that things aren't smooth right off the get-go, but I would hope that we get beyond just saying no and try to work things out. I know we have some teachers already with webcam and I know it's not simple. It's great for me to sit here and try to simplify it. I know it's not an easy process as a teacher in a classroom and you kind of see that. You get a taste of that when we look through the virtual stuff now. I've always known that things don't greatly go really smooth the first week of school, but we never see it. And principals and the teachers work through it and parents and everybody else work through it, but we got to see firsthand some of those things happening even if we're here virtually. I would hope we would go forward and try to make things work. That's all we can hope for. And like I said, let's just, let's do what other people do, make it better and again, we're going to be meeting next week and we'll be meeting quite often if we need to make adjustments. But we just need to sit down and communicate and give and take. It just can't be our way or no way. We need to come to a happy medium and go forward. That's what the mission is about. We're trying to do the best for students. You get this complication between virtual and non-virtual and that has a lot of hazards in that. This seems to be the best for students at this point. We'll see. Thanks for all the comments today and we'll see how it goes.
Sir?
Mr. Dru? All right. First, I want to thank the, you know, the teachers out there right now for all they're doing to start the year off. It was you know, I know I got three daughters in this district and seeing it every day, they're doing a heck of a job. I'm sure they are for the entire district. As far as tonight and our discussion, I mean, I think tonight was great amongst all board members. Discussing this and getting everything out in the open, I think it kind of lends to what we've talked about this board quite a few times. Hopefully, Mr. President will think about going to working meetings where we talk about this stuff and instead of having committees. Maybe that was the problem. I mean, we weren't ready until day one. There was a lot of you know, different committees meeting and we all had the same views, but a lot of communication maybe was, wasn't there and maybe we would have had a decision sooner, but regardless, you know, we are where we're at and I want to thank the admin, superintendent. I mean, they've been communicating with us. I don't know anybody out there that think they haven't been telling us plans, giving us ideas of what we need to be doing, what we can do, can't do. It's just a tough decision. As everybody said here, there's no perfect decision or perfect way of doing this. I hope that the, you know, here from the Navy president tonight, I hope that you'll sit down after tonight. I understand you're upset. And I'm a union leader just like you. I have members and I fight for on a daily basis. I respect, I respect what you're doing. You're fighting for your members, but as union leaders, there comes a time we need to put aside some things and we need to figure out a way. I got members out there right now working on this stuff, probably listening right now. It's not perfect out in the world area, world for anybody. And we just need to figure out a way, I hope you'll sit down with the administration and not just say no. You can put sunsets in contracts. You can do different things where you don't lose ground and you can find a way to make this work for the students and for the parents. I mean, a lot of what has been battled for us is, is that dynamic is what it is. And again, I don't want you to take it as I don't respect you and I don't respect the teachers out there because I do. But we just, we're in uncharted times and we need to find a way to make it work. So I hope you'll sit down with an open mind, protect your, your teachers, but also find a way to make it work. Thank you.
Mr. Moses?
I just want to say thank you to all our teachers, administrators, coaches, staff, studio bus drivers. Other than that, I really just don't have much to say except for, I know you guys are doing the best you can and I'm going to do everything I can to hopefully get you the support you need to make this work. Thanks.
I just wanted to say that my, my heart goes out to the Morrisat family. I'm sure everybody here is braced. And I know that the community is behind them.
We can't hear you.
I said, I just wanted to say that my heart goes out to the Morrisat family as I'm sure, you know, is true with everybody here and all the board members and all the staff of Anchor Bay. And I also want to thank, you know, our staff that's been working tirelessly to get everything together. Our teachers have been doing a tremendous job despite the challenges that this year has already faced them. And also, you know, I don't forget our furloughed workers. You know, you're not forgotten about. And as was mentioned tonight, we hope to get you back very smooth as we get kids back to the building. But know that, you know, we still value you as well. And the job that you do for us is very important as well. Other than that, I'm happy that, you know, we're going back to giving kids and families a choice for their education. So I'm very pleased with that and that's all I got.
All right. Thank you to all the board members and I will echo some sentiments. Unfortunately, you're the last person to speak. Just like when you're in school and you want to raise your hand, everything you wanted to say was already taken by the time you got there. So I appreciate that from the board. Mr. Dru, I do recognize you know, that I felt like today's meeting went well as well with challenges that we're having, challenges that are coming. I think the board made the right choice to get our kids back to school. It's not going to be perfect. We're going to have hiccups as Mr. Middlestaff mentioned. You know, normally we don't see those that first week of school. Drop our kids off at the bus stop. We see them after school and we don't see everything, everything that happens in between. So we've had kind of some exposure to that now. I fully expect that we're going to have some more exposure to that as we move between now and October 5th. So again, I appreciate everyone's comments and everyone's effort. I appreciate the efforts that the administration is making to work with, working with the teachers. I know that they're meeting. They met this week to discuss safety protocols and what was being done, what was going to be ordered. Mr. Case was present, gave a presentation on supplies that we're, we're hoping to use. So there's certainly is communication between the administration and the teachers and hopefully that will continue because obviously if we work through the next 10 or 12 days, we have some challenges we need to work out. With that, as well as about the Parrot Morrisette family, long-term residents in the community, the family of Anchor Bay graduates and the teacher. I can't imagine what they're going through and I've always said, no one should have to ever, ever bury their child. Whether they're 90 and their kid's 65, you should never have to bury your child. So my heart goes out to them and I can imagine. On that somber note, I will solicit a motion for adjournment. Motion by Brookmeyer.
All support.
Support by Ms. Hendershaw. Over to you, sir.
Ms. Brookmeyer? Ms. Brookmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Daru?
Yes.
Ms. Academy Hendershaw?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestaff. Thank you. Motion carries. That will wrap up the meeting.